At this time, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees. One, call to order which has been done; two, adoption of the agenda which is where we are; three, comments from the public, only those relating to the reason for this special meeting; and four is adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I have a...
I'm sorry?
The meeting was called for the appointment of legal counsel and the appointment and authorization of the board attorney...
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
What's that?
Cannot hear you.
That's...
Help me get it on, please.
The meeting was called for the appointment of legal counsel and second, for the appointment and authorization the board attorney to act as temporary chairperson for the organizational meeting. Okay. We put the agenda as you submitted it, as Secretary of the Board, your submission of the agenda, we took that and put it on here. So...
You do understand that that was policy 1530. Which shows the layout. It's not that if you will read the document that was sent to you, Mr. Chair, you will find that it's the first page that you must have that has everything on it that you need as well as the signatures.
Sir, as you are aware, at any time prior to the adoption of the agenda, additions to the agenda may be made. If someone wishes to do that based on the first page of your letter, then they may do so.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to add to the agenda. Number one, the appointment of legal counsel.
Okay.
I second it.
It can be done without objection.
And the second item to place on the agenda is the appointment and authorization the board attorney to act as temporary chairperson for the organizational meeting.
I object to that. That's in violation of our board policy. The chair presides over all meetings of the Board of Trustees.
However, your term expires at the conclusion of this meeting...
No, that is incorrect.
And organizational meetings are always held by our policy manual by the attorney that's appointed to do it.
Okay.
Having served as chair, I believe that in the past I was the one who actually ran the organizational meeting.
Yes.
It's been the history, we have, that's how historically it's been done.
Yes. Yeah, the chair, if the chair is a candidate for an office, they cannot run that election. The board attorney runs that election. The meeting is presided over by the chair per the policy. So that is my objection to your second portion of the addition. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, the motion has been made to place that on the agenda. As the board has the right to vote on it, the board can approve or disprove anything they would like to.
I am ruling your second...
Pardon?
I am ruling that portion of the motion out of order. The first portion of was adopted without objection. Your motion to add having the board attorney be the presiding officer over a public body, this body, I am ruling out of order. Mr. Chair, I challenge the chair. Okay? The chair has been challenged. Do you need water?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, there's water out here. Excuse me, sir.
This is, this is irregular. Can we please have him escorted from the table? He has not been invited by this body. Thank you.
A motion was made to, well, actually not seconded, but in order to add to the agenda, having the attorney preside over the meeting at 6:45, our organizational meeting that was ruled out of order by the chair as the policy states, policy of the college states that the chair presides over all meetings of the whole board. Those in favor of upholding the chair indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Chair? I'm sorry?
A request to be recognized.
Okay, just a second.
Point of information, my motion was to have the board attorney run the meeting. Challenged the chair and that was my point.
And it was defeated.
And you changed it. And you changed the statement by the way you made it. The motion was to have the board attorney run... The motion was to have the board attorney run the meeting. That's my motion.
Oh, okay.
And I second that.
You don't have to second it.
You don't have to tell me what to do.
I'm not telling you what to do, ma'am, I'm just indicating to you that it's not necessary per procedure. Okay? A vote was already taken that the chair presides over all meetings.
Prefer roll call vote then.
Okay. Roll call vote?
And repeat the motion beforehand, so everybody clearly understands it.
As the maker of the motion, why didn't you do that, and the secretary of the board...
My motion was that the board attorney run the organizational meeting.
And you do understand that is in violation of board policy?
What's that?
You do understand that that is in violation of board policy. I just want to make sure that you are clear.
Could you cite the policy that there's some violation of?
Yeah. I can't. Board policy 1320, Board Officer Duties, 1320, Board Officer Duty states, "The chairman shall preside at all board meetings." That's fairly clear cut. Okay? Roll call? An aye is upholding the ruling of the chair. A nay is overturning the ruling of the chair. Trustee Reyes votes aye.
Would you like me to read it to you, so you have it?
No. We've started voting.
Aye.
No.
Trustee Freeman, how did you vote?
I voted aye.
Trustee Couch?
Aye.
No.
Trustee Everman?
I didn't hear you. You voted aye.
Trustee Daley?
Aye.
Trustee Swanson?
Nay.
Trustee Wilcox? With four ayes, three nays, motion does not pass.
Thank you. Now, on the, are there any other items to, because we are in the middle of adopting the agenda, are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion dies for lack of support. John?
Mr. Chair, I move that this special session, this special meeting be adjourned immediately for, because of the fact that the election or the appointment of a board attorney is on two agendas.
Support.
Discussion, it has been moved to, I want to make sure that I get this right, it has been moved to adjourn, can you repeat that, please?
That this special meeting be adjourned immediately because the appointment of a board attorney is on two agenda, agenda for two meetings.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No, there's discussion, because this is a main motion. It has been moved and seconded to adjourn this special meeting immediately because the appointment of the board attorney is already on the agenda for our 6:45 organizational meeting. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. It has been properly seconded, discussion. John is the maker of a motion, I call on you first.
The request for this special board meeting does not meet the requirements set forth in the Open Meetings Act.
Could you speak up just a little bit? I'm sorry.
I'm speaking into the microphone.
Okay, just a little bit louder. Please have a seat, sir.
I'm on.
Okay, yeah, you're on, I just couldn't hear you very clearly.
How's that?
Yes, there we go.
Okay. The request for this special meeting does not meet the requirements set forth in the Open Meetings Act in section 1530 of the Board Policies and Bylaws for the following reasons. In the Certificate of Service, Secretary Everman states in part, quote, "Therefore, this special meeting must occur before the organizational so that the two new trustees may participate in the selection," end of quote. The two new trustees in question appear to be trustees Wilcox and Swanson. If Secretary Everman is correct, and the two trustees could not participate in the board, in a board of trustees meeting as of January 18, 2023, then clearly these new trustees were not members of the Board of Trustees on January 18, and also did not, of 2023, and also did not have the authority as of that date to, the ability to request this special meeting to be held. This, the subsequent request and notice are tainted, both tainted and should not be considered. Further, the request letter of January 18 would seem to imply that the Board of Trustees is not currently represented by legal counsel. That simply is not true. If an appointment of a new legal counsel can be made without proper notice to the public of a vacancy and/or a need for legal services and subsequent due diligence providing those services, the Board of Trustees would be compromising its fiduciary responsibilities that's set forth in the Michigan Community Colleges Act and section 1700 of Board Policies and Bylaws. Also, between November 8, 2022, and January 22 of 2023, numerous communications have occurred between board members concerning this matter that may constitute a violation of the Open Meetings Acts, as well as section 1325 of the bylaws of Board Policies and Bylaws. Finally, these courses of action suggested in the letter of January 18, 2023 are imprudent and may be unlawful.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I do believe, based on comments from Trustee Everman and Mr. Jim Delaney, that there has been a violation of the Open Meetings Act due to comments of the, "It's a done deal, that our legal counsel will be dismissed," and that Jim Delaney will be brought on, that, it was said, and I quote, "We have the votes." There's also been discussion about the board officer selection as well. Again, it was said, "We have the votes." So I do believe that we have a violation of the Open Meetings Act that was perpetrated by trustees Wilcox, Swanson, Couch, and Everman. So I believe this meeting to be completely invalid.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Everman?
Policy 1700 deals with professional services, as it reads...
This is on the motion, your discussion.
This is on the motion to rebuttal both my honorable colleague, Mr. Daley, and Mr. Freeman. We are to review the board's contract, the attorney's contract, every two years. That's the responsibility of the Personnel Committee, with the help of the entire board. That was not done. Appraisals should have been done and presented to the entire board for review. Unfortunately, since it was not done, we're left with no other alternative to look for legal counsel that we can review in a timely fashion. When this was brought up over a year ago, the then-chair of the Finance Committee, excuse me, the then-chair of the Personnel Committee, said that they would do it the very next year. That, however, did not happen. So we are now coming up to three years with no appraisal of our board attorney. We therefore need to be looking at who we need for our counsel that represents the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Freeman?
So just to educate you on the process...
Through the chair.
Through the chair, to educate everyone on the process that we go through with procurement. The procurement of the services typically is just, if there was a desire to have this addressed through the board, it could have been put onto the agenda. And then we go through a formal procurement process where we solicit proposals from legal firms across the county and even statewide. And then we accept those and have a formal review process. This, to me, is a very blatant disregard for procurement, where essentially by someone suggesting that they have the votes and that Jim Delaney would be put immediately upon this meeting into that position violates procurement, and also it's just, it's very underhanded, and I believe this has all been done in conversations outside of open meetings.
Excuse me? We'll have order? Please, order?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, you are recognized.
Okay. You're accusing us of something...
Through the chair, through the chair, please.
Pardon me?
Through, address through the chair, so that way there's no...
Okay, Mr. Chair. Okay, you're accusing us of something, I don't even know what you're talking about. And you know, that, I think that requires us to get our own attorney, because you're accusing us of something false.
I'd like our board attorney to actually address through the chair, address exactly the process of violation of Open Meetings Act, and then what is actually, you know, the rights of the college and the rights of those people who potentially have violated the act. And also what the implications are for those people who have been found guilty of doing such.
Tess, Tess, can you hear me? Open Meetings Act requires discussions and decisions, deliberations, to be, to take place at an open meeting where there is a majority of the board present. There can also be small quorums that can constitute a majority, and there is individual liability for that, criminal and civil implications for that, potentially $1,000 fine, and then if there's a second offense, there can be criminal liability as well for that.
Well, that's okay, I'm just trying to get it on here. So you're saying that you have to have a quorum when you're talking to violate the Open Meetings Act?
If you're having discussions and decisions are made outside of a public meeting, that could violate the Open Meetings Act. I'm not saying that that happened, I'm just saying that you have to be very careful because that could violate the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
I don't, none of us know the details, these are just serious concerns that have been brought forward.
Well, you can put your serious concerns away, because that hasn't happened.
Okay. Yeah, per our, per, per the training and from, by understanding of your question, four people don't have to be gathered, it can be, I call you and say, you know, with an idea, and then after you and I talk, I call Wendy and say, Wendy, Jeff and I are looking at this, or Jeff, I have Jeff's support with this, that's called round robbing, round robinning, and that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
That still hasn't, that still hasn't happened.
And again, I'm making no accusations, I'm just, I'm just for clarification purposes, per the training that we had received.
I know what the law is there, so...
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
I'll just, I'll just reinforce the fact that we had two individuals state that the votes have been pre-decided outside of this meeting. So two people have said that directly, and we have witnessed to that, that it did happen.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Mr. Everman?
Could the board attorney acquaint us with policy 1325, Code of Conduct, Open Meetings Act, and in particular, focus on the last sentence?
I'm not sure what you're asking me to do.
And this is on the motion, correct? Trustee Everman? And this information is on the...
This is prevalent to everything that has been said and the motion.
For the motion, okay. I'm just trying to keep this on, I'm just trying to keep this on track.
Because the policy of 1325, which has been stated, that has been violated by these good people, the last sentence, it says, "Nothing in this policy shall be construed or interpreted to impinge upon a trustee's First Amendment rights." Therefore, the First Amendment supersedes everything. It trumps everything. Unless you want to say that no individual in this room can talk to anyone else, that my colleague, Mr. Daley, cannot send out an email asking everyone to vote for him for a position, that that would be in violation. Do we really want to go down that road?
So, please, can we have our board attorney give us the, her synopsis of First Amendment versus the Open Meetings Act?
Well, I just want to say, first of all, these are allegations and concerns that have been brought forward. There, I'm not giving a legal opinion without all of the facts, would not be in the board's best interest at this time, but I do, the board does have the right to bring this up during this discussion, because you have to make a decision of whether it's appropriate to move forward or not. I don't have all the information and the details. First Amendment really is separate and distinct from what the issue is with whether an Open Meetings Act violation has occurred. The Board of Trustees has to act in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. That's all there is to it. You cannot make decisions, you cannot deliberate outside of a public meeting. That's the bottom line. The First Amendment really doesn't come into play at all with that.
So, Mr. Chair, is our board attorney instructing us that our policy manual that clearly states this in the open meeting section, that that's not relevant? And that we're not to talk to one another?
No.
Literally, there's a problem with our attorney at this point.
Mr. Chair?
Is it fair to say that, Mr. Chair, through the chair, is it fair to say that First Amendment is allowing us all to have our own opinions, and we can say things and do things? Open Meetings Act is about a body of elected officials discussing the business of the college in a fashion outside of the public domain?
It's about transparency. It's making sure that the business of the college and decisions that impact the college are made in an open meeting.
Yes. And that, and, yeah, John?
On a related matter, I was looking at this paper that I was handed, that was, I think may have been a proposed agenda, and I couldn't help but notice that item six, appointing and authorizing the board attorney to act as temporary chairperson for the organizational meeting.
Now, to...
I believe that to do that, with the, with the specific exception of conducting the election, would in fact be an unlawful act.
Yeah, that was, that was... It was ruled out of order and upheld by the board. So, yes, the board agrees with you and them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, do you need the motion to be repeated?
Yeah.
Go ahead and read the motion again. And the motion before us at this time, please repeat, being read.
The motion is to end the board meeting.
No. No, no, when I ask you to do it, you have to read it verbatim. The motion was, John, will you restate your motion, please?
I move that the special, that this special meeting be adjourned immediately because the appointment of the attorney is on the agenda for both this meeting and the organizational meeting.
Okay. That's the question before you. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
We need a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote? Chairman Reyes?
Aye.
Trustee Freeman?
Aye.
Trustee Couch?
No.
Trustee Everman?
Nay.
Trustee Daley?
Aye.
Trustee Swanson?
Nay.
Trustee Wilcox?
Aye.
That's four ayes, three nays, the motion passes, to end the special meeting and adjourn.
Wendy just said aye.
What's that?
Wendy just said aye.
Why did Wendy do that?
She voted aye.
What's that?
She voted for a-
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 What's that?
The swearing in will take place in a few minutes. If you could, please find your seats. Again, the swearing in will take place in a few minutes. If you could, please find your seats.
At this time, I'd like to call the special organizational meeting of the Mott Community College Board of Trustees to order.
At this time, we will have the oath of office administered to Janet Couch, John Daly, myself, Jeffrey Swanson, and Wendy Walcott. Your Honor, would you like to come up here? Would you like us to come to you?
Yes, absolutely.
Before we do, I'm just going to make a few very brief remarks, and that is that I am honored to be here today to conduct... I'm sorry, this one? I just wanted to say good evening, everyone. My name is Justice David Viviano from the Michigan Supreme Court, and I'm honored to be with you tonight to conduct the swearing in. I'm especially honored to be here as part of Mott's centennial celebration, 100 years of providing quality, accessible, and affordable educational opportunities to the, at least to the parts and maybe all of the five counties that fall under your jurisdiction. So I was very glad to be here and to see what a beautiful campus this is. I have not been on campus before, and I hope to come back. I just wanted to say very briefly that public service is a high calling, and all of the trustees who are here, you're in the front lines of representative democracy. It's sometimes a thankless job, but I know that you'll serve your citizens, your constituents honorably, and you'll serve them with distinction. Just remember to always act with integrity and in the best interests of your community, and of course, in the best interests of all of the many students that you serve and that this institution has served over the years. With that, I'm honored to swear in, I think, the board members who didn't get to get sworn in in person two years ago, and also the re-elected and elected board members from the 2022 general election. All right, please, please raise your right hands and repeat after me, "I do solemnly swear..." "...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..." "...and the Constitution of the State of Michigan..." "...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of..." "...the Office of Member of the Board of Trustees of Mott Community College..." "...to the best of my ability." "So help me God." "Congratulations."
Thank you. Where's the agenda? Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Everman?
I'm first working on getting my PA system I. Got it. Change item 1.5, all five, to postpone the nomination and election of Assistant Secretary until the Board of Trustees Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, and Secretary interview and recommend a candidate to the full board.
Trustee Everman, I think that you're... It's not an addition to the agenda. And when we get to 1.05, the chair would accept a motion to table that. Would that be acceptable to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to remove items 107 and 1.08, as those are the purview of the Chair of the Board to make those appointments after the discussion with board members as to what positions they would like to be in.
Is there any objection to that? Okay. State your objection. Please state your objection so we can...
I object.
Okay. All right. Okay, so those remain. Sorry. Not on that, no. Okay. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we remove of all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serve as delegates, directors, or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges, AACC, and the Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, and reappoint new trustees to these positions.
I have objection.
I heard your motion, but I haven't heard a second.
That's my motion. Sorry?
That was my motion to add that.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
I object. Actually, the appointments are made, those are annual, or those are appointments of the organizational meeting. It's so automatically, you know, just because I was the AACC rep doesn't mean I'm the ACC rep moving forward. So we don't have to terminate because the organizational meeting actually handles the appointment of the new reps.
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, that's not correct. Those appointments are made in June, as you will recall.
Yes, they're made in June.
And therefore, the decision to appoint those were made last June, and the current board is no longer beholden to decisions that were made by previous boards. So therefore, this board can make that appointment for the next six months until we do it in our normal timeframe in June.
So the board resolutions, those were made last June. The appointment for the community college associations do normally happen in June, and what the board acted on at that time is still valid. What the board needs to decide tonight is because the former board chair, Anne Figaroa, is no longer a trustee, that is what you need to replace so that you have both, all of those positions accounted for where she, where she was named. But that wouldn't necessarily void out the other appointments made.
Mr. Chair? The motion, as read, was removal of all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates, directors, or representatives. Therefore, that does not include the position that the Honorable Anne Figaroa was serving as.
Right.
That includes everyone else. And after all, it would be nice to be able to share positions with other trustee members. As I learned in kindergarten, it's always nice to share your toys.
Yeah, it's not a toy, but the ACCT directorship, that is, the representative is the voting member of the ACCT, and that is automatically the Chair of the Board. So whoever is the Chair of the Board becomes that Director. This is actually just the appointment, that's the reason that it's vacant, is because Anne no longer did that. I am not the voting member of the, as a member of the Board of Directors of the ACCT, I do not get a vote in the Congress. That is strictly for the one person who is the voting delegate, and that's the Chair of the Board. If the Chair of the Board attends the ACCT Congress, then they vote. If they do not, then they assign that voting right to another member of the Board who does attend there. John Daly is our current MCCA Director. And so, the motion, so... Your motion isn't, isn't consistent with what 1.10 is, because that's an automatic one. And we have objection to the appointment or the elimination of 1.09. Is that, is that... Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded to, and we will include 1.10, but that is, it's a moot point.
Mr. Chair, you make some very valid points here.
Thank you.
The concern is, when the training took place for our board members last month, none of this was explained to any of them, not even me, and I've been here 10 years. That should have clearly been given in training. I would like to keep the motion before us. Thank you. Now, I also have another one.
We have one, you have a motion on the floor. Do you want to deal with that, or are you gonna...
No, I want, I'll go ahead and deal with that one, and then we'll go to the next one.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to remove 1.09 and 1.10. No, not remove them, remove the individuals who currently hold those positions.
Remove all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates, directors, or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges and Association of Community College Trustees and reappoint new trustees to these positions.
Right. So, but it boils down to removing John Daly.
No.
Yes.
No.
Because John Daly is the only one that's due. Michael Freeman is AACC? Oh, okay.
The sidebar discussion could be shared with the rest of the board.
She was answering a question, saying, "Michael Freeman is the AAC?" Okay, that's not listed on here. AACC. Okay. Okay.
They should also be recognized that the board chair is the one who's choosing those positions. It comes before the board, subject to approval, but the chair, if you're going to redo the whole thing, the chair should have some say in who those individuals are going to be.
They are appointments. Okay. I've said that I'll accept the motion. So the motion, restate it, please.
Removal of all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates, directors, or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges and Association of Community College Trustees and reappoint new trustees to these positions.
Now, the appointment, we'll have order. The appointment is by the Chair. So, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Trustee Freeman?
Yeah, I just feel like this is vindictive. This is just attacking members of the Board who didn't vote the way that an individual wanted.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
In the, in the opinion of the Chair, I heard more nays than yays.
Roll call vote, Mr. Chair.
We will go with a roll call vote. Let me finish.
Roll call vote, as trustee Everman moves to remove all current trustee members who have been appointed and have served as delegates for the ACCT and as the, and for the MCCA, and moves to reappoint new members to these positions. Chairman Reyes?
Nay.
Chairman Freeman, or trustee Freeman?
Nay.
Trustee Couch?
Yang.
Trustee Everman?
I support the motion.
That's an aye. Trustee Everman's an aye. Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Swanson?
No.
Trustee Walcott? That's five nays, two ayes, the motion is not adopted.
On the adoption of the agenda, have the motion...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one other addition I would like to add to the agenda. I would like to confer of honorary associate degree and resolution of appreciation for Anne Figaroa and Anthony Branch at this meeting. I can't hear you, Madam.
Those are planned for our regular order, our regular board meeting at 7:30.
I've made the motion that we do it at this meeting.
Is there objection?
Objection.
Okay. Seeing that there's objection to that motion, is there a second for the motion?
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded to confer a honorary degree to former trustee Figaroa and former trustee Branch at this meeting instead of at the regular meeting, which begins at 7:30. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Roll call.
A motion to confer an honorary degree for Anne Figaroa and Anthony Branch in this meeting and not at the regular meetings scheduled. Chairman Reyes?
No.
Chairman Freeman, or trustee Freeman?
No.
Trustee Couch?
Yes.
Trustee Everman?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott? That's four, that's four ayes and three nos, and the motion is adopted.
I hope they didn't have any family coming at 7:30, because they'll miss the conference at that point. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to adopt the agenda would be in order.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
There.
It's been moved and supported to adopt the agenda. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved as amended. At this time, we will entertain, entertain, we will take comments from the, from the public if any have been turned in.
There has, Chair. We have Deandro Rabanzo Robinson out of Flint, Michigan, and wants to speak to the future of the college.
I'd ask the person to come forward, state your name and affiliated group, if applicable.
Dewan Robinson?
Mr. Chair, you want to give a reminder that public comment is limited to five minutes?
Yes. Yes, before you begin, and this goes to everybody who is doing public comments, public comments are five minutes or less. And who's keeping time? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So, I guess my take on this is, as I watch this, this community is looking for diverse equity and inclusion. And when we sit here from the community, it's going through many transitions. And even as we watch this display right now, today, there's obviously some special interest taking place. And what we need to do is come together, and it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, Republican. I think we have to serve this community in pure altruism as one. And so, as I oppose my support for this institution, under the leadership of Dr. Beverly Walker Grifio, it has done exceptional, and we greatly support the work that she's done. This community is coming together now, and we are working to address all issues at every level.
Mr. Chair, you make some very valid points here.
Thank you.
The concern is, when the training took place for our board members last month, none of this was explained to any of them, not even me, and I've been here 10 years. That should have clearly been given in training. I would like to keep the motion before us. Thank you. Now, I also have another one.
We have one, you have a motion on the floor. Do you want to deal with that, or are you gonna?
No, I want, I'll go ahead and deal with that one, and then we'll go to the next one.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to remove 1.09 and 1.10. No, not remove them, remove the individuals who currently hold those positions.
Remove all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates, directors, or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges and Association of Community College Trustees, and reappoint new trustees to these positions.
Right, so, but it boils down to removing John Daly.
No.
Yes.
No.
Because John Daly is the only one that's still... Michael Freeman is AACC? Oh, okay.
The sidebar discussion could be shared with the rest of the board.
She was answering a question, saying, "Michael Freeman is the AAC?" Okay, that's not listed on here. AAC. Okay. Okay. Okay.
It should also be recognized that the board chair is the one who's choosing those positions. It comes before the board, subject to approval, but the chair, if you're going to redo the whole thing, the chair should have some say in who those individuals are gonna be.
They are appointments. Okay. I've said that I'll accept the motion. So, the motion, restate it, please.
Removal of all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates, directors, or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges and the Association of Community College Trustees, and reappoint new trustees to these positions.
Now, the appointment, we'll have order. The appointment is by the chair. So, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Trustee Freeman?
Yeah, I just feel like this is vindictive. This is just attacking members of the board who didn't vote the way that an individual wanted.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
In the, in the opinion of the chair, I heard more nays than yays.
Roll call vote, Mr. Chair.
But we will go with a roll call vote. Let me finish.
Roll call vote, as trustee Everman moves to remove all current trustee members who have been appointed and have served as delegates for the ACCT and as the, and for the MCAA, and moves to reappoint new members to these positions. Chairman Reyes?
Nay.
Chairman Freeman, or trustee Freeman?
Nay.
Trustee Couch?
Yang.
Trustee Everman?
I support the motion.
That's an aye. Trustee Everman's an aye. Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Swanson?
No.
Trustee Walcott? That's five nays, two ayes, the motion is not adopted.
On the adoption of the agenda, have the motion...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one other addition I would like to add to the agenda. I would like to confer of honorary associate degree and resolution of appreciation for Ann Figaroa and Anthony Branch at this meeting. I can't hear you, Madam.
Those are planned for our regular order, our regular board meeting at 7:30.
I've made the motion that we do it at this meeting.
Is there objection?
Objection.
Okay. Seeing that there's objection to that motion, is there a second for the motion?
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded to confer a honorary degree to former trustee Figaroa and former trustee Branch at this meeting instead of at the regular meeting, which begins at 7:30. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Motion?
A motion to confer an honorary degree for Ann Figaroa and Anthony Branch in this meeting and not at the regular meetings scheduled. Chairman Reyes?
No.
Chairman Freeman, or trustee Freeman?
No.
Trustee Couch?
Yes.
Trustee Everman?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott? That's four, that's four ayes and three noes, and the motion is adopted.
I hope they didn't have any family coming at 7:30, because they'll miss the conference at that point. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to adopt the agenda would be in order.
Motion to adopt the agenda. As of...
Is there a second?
There.
It's been moved and supported to adopt the agenda. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If it's opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved as amended. At this time, we will entertain, entertain, we will take comments from the, from the public, if any have been turned in.
There has, Chair. We have Deandro Rabanzo Robinson out of Flint, Michigan, and wants to speak to the future of the college.
I'd ask the person to come forward, state your name and affiliated group, if applicable.
Dewan Robinson.
Mr. Chair, you want to give a reminder that public comment is limited to five minutes?
Yes. Yes, before you begin, and this goes to everybody who is doing public comments, public comments are five minutes or less. And who's keeping time? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So, I guess my take on this is, as I watch this, this community is looking for diverse equity and inclusion, and when we sit here from the community, it's going through many transitions. And even as we watch this display right now, today, there's obviously some special interests taking place. And what we need to do is come together, and it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, Republican. I think we have to serve this community in pure altruism as one. And so, as I pose my support for this institution, under the leadership of Dr. Beverly Walker Grifio, it has done exceptional, and we greatly support the work that she's done. This community is coming together now, and we are working to address all issues at every level, whether it be in education, at the city, or the county. And so, as we sit here, we want, we really want to see this body work to make sure you serve, not only the students at this school, but then also be real visionaries and leaders for this community. And so, I just speak on behalf of what we see and where we're going. The future for Flint is decided on the leadership, and so you all are a part of that, as one piece of this community. So, it does a disservice when we have folks congregating together, if you have different issues. You want to be able to understand that we watch this. We're watching this, we come out, and I appreciate everybody in the audience who took time out of their day to come sit down and watch this take, or watch this all play out. But let me be mindful, let us all be mindful, that we have a job and a duty to do. And I know we all come from different perspectives and different backgrounds, but it doesn't matter when we are going against each other and we are trying to make decisions or we are creating hostile environments, and that won't work, and we don't care to see it. So, what we do, and what we should do moving forward, let's continue to kind of act in kindness and respect for one another, and allow folks to do their jobs and their duties without anything hanging over their head. I, myself, in this community, have watched this play out on many levels, and it doesn't end well. And so, we know that folks are working and doing those things behind closed doors and having conversations that doesn't serve us all well, and the city of Flint doesn't need that. So, I come to you, all trustees, and congratulations to the newly elected ones that came aboard. You have a duty to do. Also, remember that you will always be coming up for election, and you will always have to serve in the best way possible, or we won't need to have you servicing. So furthermore, continue to keep doing a great job, continue to keep being a beacon of light for the city of Flint, continue to serve this institution in the best and the finest fashion, and allow greatness to prevail. Thank you.
We have Frederick Flowers, and his topic is getting rid of the president.
Mr. Chair?
Good evening.
Mr. Chair?
My name is Pastor Frederick L. Flowers, I pastor promise Tabernacle Baptist Church in Flint, Michigan, I live in Grand Blank, and I heard some voices that I don't like. And the reason I don't like it is the agenda, and we can hear that agenda. If you've been in leadership, I've been past in 40 years, and specifically, I hear some voices that has an agenda, and that agenda is aimed at the President, Dr. Beverly. And we're gonna serve you notice. Your agenda, which you won't tell anybody what it's about, if you try to remove Mrs. Beverly, you will hear from us. I'm part of the concerned pastors, I represent them, and we will be looking at you when you run for again. And you that have Tennessee taste, we don't go for that in Michigan.
Mr. Chair? We're in public comments right now. Could you explain the, when you address the board at the open mic now, the proper way that that is done? The board attorney should be familiar with us and the topics that are discussed, as so far, we've had things that are discussed that are not on our agenda, and I'm wondering where they're coming from.
During public comments, the public is free to comment as they will, which they have, which they have done.
Please look at your bylaws.
Okay, we'll have order in the audience, please. Okay. What is there? I am, I am, in, in all of the meetings that I have been in, we've had people that have come up with public comments, and they give comment. We do not respond, we hear their comments, and then we, we move forward from there. So, I don't know, I don't know what it is that you're talking about.
I'm asking the attorney to read to us and to the audience so they understand the proper procedure for this. You should know this.
The proper procedure for public comment?
Yes, please, please give us that, so that we all understand that the items that we talk about at the public comment are items that are on the agenda. And what I've heard from the last two is concerns about the dismissal of the college president. I, however, don't see it on the, our agenda tonight, nor have I heard discussion about this before. So, in case somebody's doing this, it needs to be put on the agenda, so we could address that, and it's not.
The chair, Mr. Chair, is correct that the Board of Trustees should not respond.
Cite it. Cite it out of the policy manual book.
Trustee Everman? Public comment for an organizational meeting should be about the organizational meeting. However, when someone comes up for a public comment, you would want to be very careful in how you suppress the participant. So, it's my best advice to you and members of the, and members of the public, if it is related to this organizational meeting, that would be an appropriate public comment. If you have other comments, you can make them in the regular meeting.
Right, okay. I wasn't understanding your point, but I understand what you were, what you're saying. Yes, I will address that the public comments must be about the agenda. This is our organizational meeting, which is basically, at this point, we're getting ready to elect officers, and we, we elect chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, treasurer, and then some of the others, and you heard some of those things that we were, that we were talking about. So, if your comment is about that, then I would, I would ask you to, you know, by all means, please come up. If your, if your public comment is in support of, say, the President, or it is chastising the vice chair of the board for whatever, you have the right to do that, but the 7:30 meeting would be more apropos for, for those, for those comments. I do understand what you're saying, so, okay.
Just so our board attorney is aware.
At this point...
Mr. Chair?
No.
Point of information, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
A point of information.
What is your point?
My point of information is the attorney needs to know it's Policy 1640. Therefore, she can cite it properly and should have been read at the beginning of this as it is.
You asked her for information, and then, and then you interrupted her when she was trying to answer you, just like you when, so, let's, do we have any other public comments? Okay.
We do, and we have Leonard Mardel that wants to speak on the topic of the board. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, one second. Bernadette Jefferson, Bishop Bernadette Jefferson on the law firm, topic law firm.
Good evening, I'm Bishop Bernadelle Jefferson, pastor of Faith Delivered Center, active member of our community, Beach Metropolitan District Commissioner. I have one comment to make right now, and then I want to come back when it's time for public comments to address any issue that we want to address. And my, my, my comment this time is the hostility that is being displayed among this board is very upsetting to the community. It's very upsetting to me, because how can you get anything done fighting among, among one another when you're supposed to be fighting for our community?
Thank you very much for your comments.
We have one more comment coming from Ann Figaroa and the appointment of new board, of the new board attorney.
Good evening, trustees. This is specifically for 1.06 on your agenda. In December of last year, I had sent an email to all the Board of Trustees regarding the Open Meetings Act, regarding future plans that I, that stemmed some concern out of a conversation that I had with our former board attorney. And I'm gonna read you the email that I sent, and then I'll just have some additional comments beyond that. "Trustees, after the December 2022 board retreat, I received a call from the former board attorney wherein he made representation that caused me to question whether deliberations and decisions about who will fill board positions in the next term had already taken place. I also received, recently received, an inquiry raising the concern about a possible Open Meetings Act violation as it relates to decisions that may have been reached before the next board meeting. While I have no direct evidence at this time, this was in December, to conclude that an intentional violation of the Open Meetings Act had occurred, I'm taking this opportunity to remind you of the board's obligation to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Please refer to the Open Meetings Act materials you were provided in the retreat, and for further guidance, particularly Section 3, Number 2, which states decisions are to be made at a meeting open to the public. An Open Meetings Act violation is a serious issue, and every Board of Trustees should be aware and attentive when this, when having conversations with other trustees. If you have any questions about OMA rules and guidelines, please contact the board attorney." And this was actually from me and Art Reyes to the board. The concern that was raised on December 15th, the former board attorney, Jim Delaney, called me and was asking for concessions, asking to make arrangements about conversations between trustees and president, and who was gonna be in what position. And at that time, I just stopped him, and I said, "This sounds like an, a violation of Open Meetings Act." There was discussion of the round robin type, of I have this vote, you have this vote. I got the very clear impression that decisions were already made, and it was very concerning. And it appears tonight, others have had that concern as well. So, please, it is important to talk to each other, it is important to have conversations with each other. I've had those one-on-one, but don't make decisions, have the discussion in public, so we, not only the public can hear your opinion, but also you can hear the other trustees' opinion. Because sometimes I'm on the phone, you're one-on-one, oh, they agree with that, that, that doesn't, that shouldn't happen. That shouldn't happen. I am raising the concern about the qualifications of the former board attorney based on that conversation, and I encourage you to think long and hard about appointment, appointing Jim Delaney as the board attorney. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any? Are there any more public comments, that's it?
There are no more public comments.
Okay, at this point, in the agenda, we move on to the new business. The first will be the nomination and election of chairperson. At this point, our board attorney will run that election.
So, at this point in the board meeting, I will be facilitating the nomination and election of the board chairperson only.
I nominate Art Reyes.
Before you do that, I'm just gonna officially open up nominations. They are now open, and I will take the first nomination.
Okay, Art Reyes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes, do you accept or decline this nomination? Are there any other nominations for board chair?
I nominate, and trustee, trustee Everman as board chair.
Is there a second? Trustee Everman, do you accept or decline this nomination?
I accept the nomination.
So, at this time, we have two nominations, trustee Reyes, trustee Everman. Are there any other nominations for board chairperson? Hearing none, I will officially close nominations. Since we have two nominations, this will now go to vote. I will pick on each trustee individually, so that they can state who they're voting for. Trustee Walcott, who is your vote? One for Ms. trustee Everman.
We can't hear you, mic please, turn your mic on.
Thank you, it's on.
Randy's mic.
Thank you. Everman? Trustee Swanson, who is your vote?
Everman.
Thank you. Trustee Freeman, who is your vote?
Reyes.
Trustee Daly, who is your vote?
Reyes.
Trustee Couch, who is your vote for?
Everman.
Trustee Reyes?
Reyes.
Trustee Everman, who is your vote?
Everman.
Okay, that is four votes for Mr. Everman, three votes for Mr. Reyes. Trustee Everman? Mr. Chair? I'll hand this back to you. Congratulations.
No, no.
Well, I thought, I thought you guys all voted that the entire organizational meeting's gonna be run by the attorney. Yeah, didn't they?
I would like you, Art, to complete the meeting as chair. It would be an honor to all of us on the board, because we're all going to work together, and we're all working to work with Beverly. There's no animosity between me and anyone else, and I would be honored if you will complete the rest of the meeting, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate your request, Chair Everman, but as I, in the last meeting, said that the, the board policy says that the chair presides over every meeting, I do appreciate the sentiment, but I must respectfully decline and have you as our newly elected chair, and I congratulate you on that, as our newly elected chair, to run, to run this meeting and our 7:30 PM meeting.
Art? I know you just want my snacks down here.
Sir, can I have some assistance?
Thank you. Got it. Colleagues for the Board, we have nominations open for the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for the Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Sue Couch.
Pardon?
Sue Couch.
There's a nomination for Sue Couch. Is there a second? A second from Jeff Swanson? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Wendy Walcox.
Second.
And we have a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Mrs. Couch, will you accept your nomination?
Yes.
Thank you. Wendy, will you accept your nomination?
I actually decline. I am new to this, and I feel like this is too big of a position for me right now.
Okay, thank you. Shall we do a roll call vote?
I, did we close? Because I guess I could still nominate Art Reyes. Second.
Mr. Reyes, will you accept the nomination for Vice Chair?
I accept.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? We now move to close nominations, and we will do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please tell me whom you are voting for, for Vice Chair. Mr. Freeman?
Reyes.
Reyes. Mrs. Couch?
For Sue Couch.
Mr. Reyes? Mr. Daley? And myself, Sue Couch. Congratulations, Mrs. Couch. You are the Vice Chair of the Mott Community College Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We now open nominations for the election of Secretary. Are there any nominations for the Secretary?
I nominate Wendy Walcox.
Will you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? We will close nominations then for Secretary. Madam Attorney, can we do this by acclamation, or should we take it by vote?
Because there's only one nomination, you don't need to vote.
Acclamation? By acclamation, Wendy, congratulations. You are now the Secretary of the Board of Trustees of Mott Community College. We now open nominations for the Treasurer of Mott Community College. Are there any nominations?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Jeff Swanson for the Treasurer.
Jeff, will you accept the nomination for Treasurer? Yes? Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Yes, Mr. Reyes?
I nominate John Daley.
John Daley. Will you accept that nomination, Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Therefore, I close the nominations for Treasurer, and when I call your name, you will vote for the person, name the person that you are voting for. Mr. Freeman? I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait for, Secretary.
There were two.
Uh, this would be Daley.
Mr. Daley. Mrs. Couch.
Swanson.
Mr. Reyes?
Daley.
Mr. Daley?
Daley.
Mrs. Walcox?
Swanson.
And I vote for Swanson. Congratulations, Mr. Swanson. You are now the new Treasurer of Mott Community College. Do we have the corrections for the agenda now? The next item on our agenda is the election of the Assistant Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Is there a motion for Item 1.05?
So moved.
We have, motion? Do we have a second?
Not clear on what the motion is. Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion on Item 1.05? Do we have any discussion on Item 1.05?
So who specifically are we nominating?
What are we doing?
Okay, that, just for point of clarification, Jordan Kaiser, yep.
Jordan Kaiser.
Point of inquiry, what are we doing here?
We are voting on the appointment of the Assistant Secretary to the Board of Trustees, Jordan Kaiser. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Do we need a roll call vote? Mr. Secretary, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Was there, I don't think there are any nays, right? Did anyone vote nay?
I thought I heard one. That's why I wanted to just make sure. There's no nays. Okay. Congratulations, Jordan. You are now hired from ours for the next two weeks. Item 1.06, Appointment of Legal Counsel.
I make motion that we appoint Amber Lee Brennan as Legal Counsel for Mott Community College Board of Trustees.
There is a second for Item 1.06. Other discussion?
Yes. Can, can I make a motion now for?
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, Mrs. Couch.
Oh, okay.
And so you either vote for the motion that was made, which was to appoint Amber Brenner as our Legal Counsel, or you vote it down. If it's voted down, a new motion for a new attorney would have to be brought forward.
Oh, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, I now take the vote. All those in favor appointing Amber Brenner?
Request roll call vote.
Mr. Daley?
Yes. I request roll call.
Is your microphone on? I can't hear you.
I request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mr. Secretary?
Motion to appoint, appoint Amber Brennan as Legal Counsel to the Board of Trustees. Chairman Everman? Trustee Freeman? Trustee Couch? Trustee Reyes? Trustee Daley? Trustee Swanson? Trustee Walcott? That's five ayes, two nays. The motion does not pass. I'm sorry, the motion passes.
Items 107, Appointment of Finance Audit and Personal Committees. Requested that that not be placed on for a motion at this time. These are appointments by our bylaws that the Board Chair does. Item 1.08 is also an item that is done by the Board Chair. Item 1.09, Appointment of the Michigan Community College Association Alternate Director. Are there any nominations? Are there any nominations?
Wendy.
Wendy?
Support.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, support.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
That's a good choice.
Yes.
I can't hear you.
We need to know which one this is.
Which one? This is the Appointment of the MCC. And this is for the MCC Alternate Director. No other nominations? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Wendy, congratulations, you're the Alternate Director for the MCC. Item 1.10, Appointment of Association of Community College Trustee, AACCT Director. As we were told earlier by former Chair Reyes, that position goes with the Chair of the Board. If, however, you feel that you need to make a motion to that, I would take a motion and a vote on that. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Is it a question? Is it mandatory that the Treasurer is automatically the Chair, or is it anybody? I forgot.
I didn't, can you repeat the question?
Is it, is it usually automatic that the Treasurer is the automatic Chair of Finance and Audit, or could it be anybody?
It's not automatic.
Oh, okay. So I would nominate then, Trustee Daley.
How do we do that? We're not on that, on that. We've gone through that, because those are appointments made by the Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, for Point 107 and 1.08, because those are official items on this agenda, I think you need to make a formal, you need to have someone, you can request a formal motion to postpone those, so that you have an opportunity to review and decide who you're going to recommend.
Okay.
So I would suggest that you entertain a motion to hold those off until the February meeting, but you should do that on the record and make that a formal action since it's on this agenda. Mr. Chair, who is the Director right now?
Who asked the question?
I did. Who is the Director right now?
Of the MCC?
ACCT.
ACCT would be me, because as Mr. Reyes had said, it goes with the chairmanship. So I become that position.
Oh, okay.
Now, there was a question by Mr. Freeman as it relates to the appointment to the Finance Committee and the Chair, and our attorney has suggested that we entertain a motion now to postpone Items 107 and 108 until the February meeting, so we have a time to discuss with everyone, to figure out where they would like to serve and who would be in those positions as Chair of those committees. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Just clarification, Chair Everman, as the Chair, you get to make the choices, and then it's subject to Board approval.
Yes.
But you get to determine who you think will meet those needs and interests in serving in those committees.
So if it's a pleasure, I'll withdraw my motion, and I will make a motion that we postpone this decision to allow the Board Chair to have conversations, you know, you know, in committee meeting, and kind of decide who has interest to do it and who makes the best fit. So I would make that motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It appears as if it's unanimous, and we do not need to have a roll call vote. I would like to say, I would like to talk to each of our fellow trustee members, so that we can get an idea of where you feel that you would best serve. Thank you. The next item on the agenda was removal of all current trustees who were appointed before 2023 and serving as delegates or directors or representatives to the American Association of Community Colleges, AACC, and the Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, and reappoint new trustees to these positions. Is there a motion for this?
Question, please.
Yes.
I thought in the previous meeting that that addition to the agenda was voted down, was it not?
Was it? I didn't think it was.
It was voted down.
Let's get the review of the record from our new Assistant Secretary.
So it's not on the agenda?
So.
It's not on the agenda? Okay. My apologies. Okay, the next item on the agenda is conferring of the honorary Associate's Degree and Resolution of Appreciation for Ann Figaroa and Anthony Branch at this meeting. Is there a second to move forward with that?
That's already been. Point of information.
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
That was adopted earlier, so at this point, just, you can just do the.
Okay, so we can go ahead and do it?
Yeah.
Was there another question?
You were the maker of the motion, Mr. Walcott.
I couldn't hear you, sir. So we have a motion, and we have a second?
No, it's already done.
You already made the motion, Mr. Chair.
Are you speaking of on the agenda for the next meeting?
No, it's right now.
Okay. All right. So are we now going to confer to Ann Figaroa and Anthony Branch? Could you please come forward, so we could give you your honorary degree and congratulations?
There's a conferring of honorary Associate's Degree and Resolution of Appreciation for Ann Figaroa. It is the mission of Mott Community College to provide high-quality, accessible, and affordable educational opportunities and services that cultivate student success and individual development, and improve the overall quality of life in a multicultural community. Elected as the Board of Trustees in 2016, Ann has spent the last six years sharing her knowledge and expertise in making sure the MCC is set up for success for the foreseeable future. Ann has been a human resource professional for almost 30 years. Her experience ranges from multiple private companies such as Ingersoll Rand and King Park, to the public sector as a retiree of Genesee County Water and Waste, to her recent retirement from the Capital Region Airport Authority in Lansing. She has a master's degree in special education, and is a certified professional in human resource, and certified professional. She has been a board, she has been a board member of several human resources and labor relations professional associations. Serving as Chairwoman of the Board of Trustees since January 2021, Ms. Figaroa has been a stalwart of leadership and advocacy for progress within the MCC community. Overseeing initiatives of an educational and working environment for its students and employees, Ms. Figaroa was able to follow through on MCC's commitment by providing newly constructed and renovated gender-neutral restrooms that provided a more inclusive space for those not afforded the res- resources in the past. Ms. Figaroa was also a strong proponent for creating the Board of Trustees reaffirmation of support for social justice and championed MCC's leadership and DEI through replicating inclusive models throughout the community. Ms. Figaro also oversaw the launching of Workforce Promise that would allow partnering employers to refer former MCC graduates back to college for continued development for free. The program will also enhance their education with technical skills and employability, skills which Ms. Figaro has been a staunch advocate for in her time on the Board. Ms. Figaro was a part of the unveiling of the Lenore Crowdy Family Life Center, which serves as a resource hub for everyone in the MCC community. The Family Service Center features everything ranging from food services, child services, transportation, and counselors. Ms. Figaro was also instrumental in the kickoff of the Centennial Celebration MCC, which led to the establishment of the Centennial Scholars Fund that will lead to the assistance and personal needs of the MCC student body to ensure that they will succeed and thrive. Ms. Figaro also served as trustee de- director and as an alternate trustee director to the Michigan Community College Association, the ACCT, and alternative representative for AACC with the intent and successes of improving an image and credibility of MCC and the advancement of numerous initiatives brought by community colleges throughout the nation. On this basis of the preceding information, the following resolution is recommended, be it resolved that the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees confers upon Ms. Ann Figaro as an honorary associate degree from Mott Community College and expresses its deep appreciation and respect for her years of service as a member of the Mott Community College Board of Trustees, adopted by the Board of Trustees January 23rd, 2023. Next, we have conferring, uh, conferring of honorary associate's degree and resolution of appreciation for Anthony Branch. Anthony Branch was appointed to the Board of Trustees in October 2021 following the resignation of former trustee Matthew Norwood. Mr. Branch has spent the last 32 years working for the Genesee County Road Commission where he currently serves as the Maintenance Manager. Mr. Branch is also the head football coach at his alma mater, Flint Beecher High School. Mr. Branch is recognized by his peers for his passionate support of the college and its mission, as evidenced by his encouraging words, leadership, and support of many projects. Mr. Branch supported new programs that allowed community members to gain new skills and the ability to earn a living wage through high-demand, high-wage career fields. Mr. Branch was a champion and led the initiative of the New Public Works Academy, a certificate program where community members can earn skills necessary to meet the labor market needs of area municipalities, and it launched in January 2023. Mr. Branch kept the safety, health, and wellness of our students and employees in the forefront of his mind when making decisions based on the health climate of our community. Mr. Branch served with a student and community-focused ideology and, and worked so everyone had the opportunity to increase their quality of life. Mr. Branch has been a beacon of, for Mott Community College as shown through his commitment and involvement throughout the Flint and Beecher community. Mr. Branch has always been a leader and a role model to his peers and is a shining example of the best of our community has to offer. On the basis of the preceding information, the following resolution is recommended, be it, that, be it resolved that the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees confers upon Mr. Anthony Branch an honorary associate degree from Mott Community College and expresses its deep appreciation and respect for his years of service as a member of the Mott Community College Board of Trustees, adopted by the Board of Trustees January 23rd, 2023.
Please bear with me for a moment while I sign these for our recipients. Here's your pen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is the comments from the public. Excuse me, comments from the Board members. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you so much. Um, I'll try and keep, uh, my comments fairly brief. But I'm, I'm really excited to see so many people here today. Um, so many people who are interested in our process and what we're doing, and I think above all transparency. I think it's critical as elected officials that we understand that we serve the public. We have the public's trust. We must act in a way and a manner which, which respects the decision that the voters of Genesee County and our service district, um, have made in bringing us on board. To, you know, I, I heard the comments from, uh, uh, former trustee Figaroa, and this brought a lot of concern and has been a blemish and, you know, I'm now the longest-serving trustee here with only 11 and a half years. But I have not really ever experienced this before. And so I really walked into this meeting being fairly uncertain about what the outcome was going to be, who is going to show up, who really cared? And were we going to have members that voted their conscience and not just what was a pre-existing decision? I was tonight very pleasantly surprised, um, by, um, some of the things I expected to happen did not happen. And this gives me hope that we can work together. Uh, and I just want to reinforce that we need to be above board and transparent. We must honor the people who brought, put us in this position. And we are above all are here to serve Mott College. We are here to serve our students, our staff, our faculty. We are not above them. We are, we are here to work with and support them in the work that they do because they all do the work. But we're here just to provide guidance and support for them. So I, I will leave this meeting, uh, being hopeful that we can continue to work together. You know, I actually am a fairly nice person and I know that my convictions may suggest that I'm, I'm a little terse sometimes, but I really believe in what I'm doing. Um, I believe in being a civil servant. Um, that's my profession in my life. And, um, so I want to thank, uh, those of you today who came and voted your conscience. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Reyes?
I would like to reiterate what, uh, trustee Freeman said and thank, and thank the individuals who've taken the time to come out today to, uh, see the workings of Mott Community College's Board. Mott's heading into its 100th year and we have been a beacon of hope for this community. And I think that we need to make sure that we do everything that we can as a Board of Trustees to continue to fulfill that, that, um, mission. It's very important that we work together to, to do so. It's very important though that in working together, we will have differences of opinion, we will have differences in policy. Um, but those differences must remain in the idea spectrum, not in personalities. And I hope that we are able to, for the sake of our students, staff, faculty, and more, and our community, um, that we are able to keep that in mind as we are deliberating each of the decisions that, that we have to, to make. And as they were conferred with their, um, degrees, I want to congratulate and thank Ann Figaroa and Anthony Branch again. Uh, it was absolutely wonderful getting the opportunity to serve with both of you. I miss you both. And congratulations on, on the well-deserved honor and thank you very much for the work that you put in for this college.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Daly?
Thank you, Chairperson Everman. I want to thank the people in the audience for caring. This Mott Community College is one of the jewels of Flint and Genesee County. And without your support and input, it's, it's difficult to keep it going in the, in a direction that serves the needs of the county and the district that it's, it's in. We depend upon y'all to tell us what, where we need to go. So most of all, thank you all for coming. I truly appreciate you being here and the support you provided to us. Those of you that know me know that I like history. And one of the things, if you go back and look, the symbol, one of the key symbols of the Roman Empire was the phossis, which was a, an axe, a battle axe, that was surrounded with just other pieces of wood bound together by cloth. And the Romans found that when, that, that unity of the battle axe and the, and the, uh, supporting, uh, staffs gave a weapon that was three times as powerful as the axe was singly. That's what I use for my model in organizations. Is that separately, we're not worth very much. We, very difficult individually to do anything. But as a team, if we truly are a team and work as a team and put the goals of the organization above those of our own, we can make progress and will greatly assist this community and the people that are in it to be able to strive for a better life. So thank you very much again for coming. My personal thanks and congratulations to former Board members Anthony Branch and Ann Figaroa. Your service was truly heroic during the time you were here and greatly appreciated. For the former officers that are here, thank you very much as well for your service. And again, thank you. Good luck to the new officers and I would look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. I apologize, Mrs. Couch. I, I skipped over you. I'm sorry.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Ann and, uh, and trustee Branch and for all they've done and the, for their service. And they're great people. And, and it's all, I don't know what else can I say, but I'm so, I'm glad to gra- congratulate you. It was great, great to be able to work with you, both of you.
Wendy?
Um, first off, I know Justice Viviano had already left. He had a really long drive to get here, so a huge thank you for him and allowing, you know, he was okay with me sharing my judge with everyone else. I want to thank my family and friends. I definitely could not have done this without them. Um, I look forward to working with each and every one of you guys. I am a team player. And, um, I look forward, I look forward to working with you guys and seeing, uh, what we can do and move in Mott forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Mr. Swanson?
Uh, not to be redundant, uh, thank you everybody for coming. Uh, I want to give us a sincere thank you to the Board members and Dr. Beverly for the, uh, flowers that we received when I had a death in my family. That was greatly appreciated. And, well, I'm out of a few words. That's about it.
Okay. As your new Chair of the Board for the 100th year of Mott Community College, thank you very much. To the public, I appreciate each of you coming. For those of you that are concerned about Dr. Beverly, at this point, there's been no evaluation done of Dr. Beverly. And that's something that is supposed to be done annually, so we will be doing that. It's not something we're working on tonight. And I will have to meet with our Board Attorney to begin a plan for how that will be done. Each of us, well, for myself and from what I've heard from each of my Board members, we're worked, are going to work together. And we are hoping that we move this college forward for the next 100 years. And Dr. Beverly, as we are right now, our President, we are working with her to make our college a better place in our community and for each of the students in the, at our college, our community, and those, those counties that we kind of go into. And as it was said earlier, there were five other ones. So we hope that we are as honorable as you expect us to be. And when we mess up, we do need you to come and speak to us and tell us to do better. And the only thing I can promise is I will attempt to do better. And I will try to be the best Chair that I can. But I need not only my Board's support and help and former Chairs, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Reyes, but I also need your help as the community. Because that's the name in the name of our college, community. And we're all community and we're attempting to work together. Thank you very much. There's another meeting after this. And I think we're going to need to go into a recess for a few minutes because some of us need to use the bathroom. So with that, I am adjourning the meeting and we will adj, we will reconvene at about 8:15 this evening. Thank you very much. That's what I thought. Great. I'm glad you did this.
Yep.
No, as to your position, no, as to your position.
Yes.
And with hers too.
Yep.
The deal is, there was, we felt that there was no evaluation of our board attorney and the deal is, we didn't get an input either. That's why I voted and made that motion about you and her.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So if you've got a problem with that, don't be a pussy and not say anything to her.
No, no.
Always talk to her.
Nope, nope. You're perfectly fine. Yeah, that's, that's how it goes. You know, I, and to be honest, I mean, if you, if for some reason anybody questions you should do that, right? I mean.
Yeah. Now, at second.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
That microphone is off. Yes.
I think we should go, maybe just go to a party.
I do too. I remember the school event that we did in East.
Really?
Don't let him get away. You gotta get that to him. Go.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You okay?
Okay.
What's that? No, people are still yelling around talking. I'm gonna give them a moment. So you want to go on a canoe trip? Do you skydive?
Well.
Do you skydive?
Hey there.
Tell me, give you no love.
Good to see you. You're a fucker, eh? See you later.
I'm so sorry. How are you? I'm so sorry. You doing all right?
Ladies and gentlemen, students and scholars and all others. The Board of Trustees of Charles Stewart Mott Community College, regular meeting of January 23rd, 2023, the 100th Year of our college now begins. Thank you for enjoying your moment of chatting with one another. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any additions? A call for a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Reyes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Most bails, nay, is have. We are now going to celebrate employee and student success. Dr. Beverly, could you please bring this forward for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have three items under BP Jason Wilson that we would like to be forward. We're going to start off with our own coach, Steve Schmidt, if he would come on up. That'll be followed by our students from Phi Theta Kappa. And then it will be followed by our newly, I want to say made, but that's not the right word. But newly deemed faculty emeritus, Dennis and Tina Hughes. So, BP Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, sitting at the table is our Hall of Fame basketball coach, who we have brought before you to celebrate and honor tonight. Our coach is known throughout the state and the nation for excellence and related to not only what our teams do on the court, but what our student athletes do off the court. And so, just here to recognize Coach for coaching his 1,000th game. That deserves applause. Coach, it looks like he was in his office drawing up some plays just right now and came over. So thanks for that, Coach. But we'll have him say a few remarks. Thank you, Coach. All right, thank you. My team wishes that worked with them. Like to welcome the new members of the board and congratulate you. As Jason mentioned, a milestone about two weeks ago. A thousand games at the Michigan Community College Athletic Association. I started here at Mott in 1991. And still am as excited to come to work every day, work with these young people that I was back in 1991. So we got great community support, as we saw tonight. I've never, in the meetings that I've come to, never saw this kind of participation. And this is a great college. I don't consider what I do a job. It's a passion. I love helping young people reach their dreams and goals. That's a thousand games. I'd rather talk about the 132 kids that we've helped as a college. Get to, 132 kids get to universities and colleges all over the country. And I'm proud of them. And we stay in touch. They're like family. They represent Mott very well. We happen to have a brand-new group this year and went up in the national rankings today to number nine. If you get a chance, come and watch us play. And again, I'd like to thank the community. And I wouldn't be a very good coach if I didn't have the opportunity to work with the students that I get to work with. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate the support.
Thank you, Coach Smith.
Thank you, Coach. Next, I'd like to call up our Phi Theta Kappa student presidents. Jennifer Concreit, Kelly Minto, and our scholarship coordinator, scholarship programs coordinator.
Close.
Close? Okay.
Coordinator for Scholars Programs.
Coordinator for Scholars Programs, Jessica Bixel, as you guys can see, very thorough. They're gonna talk to you tonight, board, about a very special honor that our chapter has received and the steps that they took to receive it. So go ahead, guys.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity to represent PTK to all of you. We've had a chapter at Mott since 1989. And for those of you who don't know, PTK is the International Honors Society for Community Colleges. And we were recently awarded a five-star distinction, due in large part to Kelly Minto and Jennifer Concreit, our co-presidents, who are with me here tonight. The five-star chapter plan is set out by PTK, a set of expectations and activities for engagement on your campus. They obviously want as much engagement as possible for students to take advantage of everything that PTK has to offer. And the stars are allocated both locally, regionally, and internationally. Five stars is as much as you can earn. And of our region, only 16 institutions received this distinction. That is because of the very hard work that was put in by Kelly and Jennifer. They revised our bylaws to better serve Mott students. They participated in the distinguished leadership program. They arranged for our honors in action. And they represented us internationally to prove how engaged we are in the way that we serve our students here at Mott. They are two of the most resourceful, tenacious, and optimistic students that we have here at Mott. And it is my pleasure to work with them. One of the things that they did this year to help earn that five-star achievement was the MLK Day of Service. And they will speak to you about that event.
Thank you, Jessica. Hello. Thank you. And I just want to say to all the new board members, congratulations and thank you for letting us speak today. So my name is Jennifer Concreit.
I'm Kelly.
We're the co-presidents of the Mott Community College Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society Chapter. Our chapter has been dedicated to honoring the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by organizing a day of service at Mott Community College for at least a decade now. This year, we have the privilege of helping host this event once again after a two-year hiatus. We recruited 50 volunteers, including students, employees, family members, and friends, to join us in making a difference. Together, we were able to create 68 blankets and distribute them to our local agencies in Flint. These agencies were Crossover Outreach, Ellie's Place, and his Center for Children, and Valley Area Agency on Aging.
Jennifer and I are extremely proud of the hard work and dedication of our chapter members and all volunteers who helped us implement this event this year. We couldn't have done it without their support and enthusiasm. We want to thank everyone who took the time to come out and help us make a difference in our community. The blankets that we made will bring warmth and comfort to those who need it the most. And it's a small, but meaningful way to honor Dr. King's legacy.
So one of the things I love about the college's MLK Day is it really brings the community together and is a great and meaningful way to honor Dr. King's legacy. There's also a wonderful thing about bringing people together from different backgrounds to work towards a common goal. And it reminds us, we come together, we can accomplish great things. It's also an opportunity for our Phi Theta Kappa chapter to be positive force in our community and make a tangible impact. And it also allows us to reflect on values and principles that Dr. King stood for and how we continue working toward creating a more just and equitable society.
And it's not just about one day of service. It's about carrying Dr. King's message of love and service throughout the entire year.
So that's exactly why we're so grateful for the support of our community, the community partners such as Crossover Outreach, Ellie's Place, and his Center for Children and Valley Area Agency on Aging, who worked tirelessly to serve those in need. We look forward to continuing our partnership with them and making a difference in our community. Thank you for joining us, this important effort, in supporting PTK's commitment to service. And we just want to say thank you to Jessica Bixel, who came. Thank you to Dr. Beverly, who came, made a blanket. We appreciate you. And thank you to Al Perry, who brought the baseball team with him to make blankets as well. It was a wonderful event. Thank you again.
Thank you. And last, but not least, we'd like to call to the table our honorees tonight. These are two of our outstanding faculty who we want to celebrate as they have received the very prestigious emeritus status. So this will be Dennis and Christine Tina Hughes, there in the back. You guys, you were hiding from me. I didn't see you. Sorry about that. Have a seat. Just a couple of quick notes before I let Dennis and Tina talk. Dennis is one of our very distinguished instructors in our AutoCAD program and definitely has helped us in moving that program forward. As recently has gone on sabbatical to really help update the program and wants to continue to move that forward. Tina as well, an innovator, helping us with innovative efforts such as developing the Math O21 course, working with our STEM scholars, and other efforts to really move our students forward in the space of STEM. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis and Tina.
Hi, thank you. I have to say thanks for this award for emeritus status. It's been fabulous over the years. I think I've been here like 25, 26 years at Mott. And definitely the best part is the students and all the kids that I've met and helped and worked with along the way.
That's the shortest speech she's probably ever given. I also would like to thank Mott and the board for just a wonderful career here at Mott. I didn't think I'd be sitting here today, 32 years after I started here, and literally had the opportunity to help thousands of people get careers started. It's been, it's been an outstanding place to work. And, you know, it's just the end of a long career. So I really miss the students. One thing, I was telling somebody in the crowd earlier during the break. One of my students, on the last day of class, was asking me about, you know, what it was gonna be like leaving Mott and everything. And they said, "Did you like it? Did you like it at Mott?" And I said, "Let me just give you a last piece of advice. Nobody stays somewhere for 32 years if they don't like it." So I liked it the whole time. So, thank you again.
So next, we have Sheri Nowak. I'm trying to, there's something. Next, we have Sheri Nowak, who will be introducing our new employees.
Thank you. I'll pass this to Rebecca Martz, who has the list. Rebecca is our Talent and Staff Development Manager.
All right. Good evening. Nice to see everyone. We have about eight people that we're going to introduce, so I'm gonna ask them to come up here and sit with me when I call their names. So first is Dr. Madonna Jackson. All right. So I have comments that I'm sharing from our supervisors. So we are welcoming Dr. Jackson back as the Dean of Technology. She's worked in several areas of the college and brings a unique perspective to the dean's role with all her years of student service experience. She's dedicated to students and their success, being at the center of all that she does. Madonna enjoys spending time cooking, enjoying home-cooked meals with family and friends, and reading. She loves making flyers and promotional materials to keep current in her skill set of educational technology. We are so very fortunate to have Dr. Jackson come back to Mott. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
I just want to say welcome and thank you for having me and introducing me tonight. I am honored to be back in Genesee County. I left for a while and went to St. Joseph County. It took about a year and I realized Genesee County is really where I needed to be. So I chose to come back and serve at Mott again. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Next, we have Jason LaSalle. All right. Jason is our new full-time automotive instructor. He comes to the Mott family after teaching the last five years at Grand Blank High School, teaching automotive maintenance and light repair grades nine through 12. Before his career in education, he spent 25 years in the auto repair industry as a mechanic and technician. He was also a small business owner for those five years. Currently, Jason is currently an ASE Certified Master Automotive Technician with 10 industry certifications. He holds an associate's degree from Denver Automotive and Diesel College and a bachelor's of applied science in automotive technology with a minor in professional communication. He has a wife, Melissa, of 23 years, and a 14-year-old daughter and 12-year-old son and two dogs, a Dash Hound and a Shih Tzu, both Eddie and Hoagie. His family loves to travel the state of Michigan in his camper. And their recreational hobbies are watching movies together and spending time outdoors. So welcome, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
I don't have anything to say. Do you guys have any questions for me? I was an adjunct here for about a year. I saw the full-time position come up and I had to jump on it. The quality of student, the caliber of student here is phenomenal. I think the campus is beautiful. Mr. Daley, I think, referred to this as one of the jewels of Genesee County. I would agree. So I'm just over the moon to be working here and be employed by Mott. So thank you all and God bless you for all the work that you guys do here to really need people like you serving our community. So, thank you very much.
Welcome. Next, we have Joyce Smith. Joy recently started as a full-time cosmetology instructor. She's a graduate of Flint Northwestern High School, Michigan College of Beauty, Culture, and Rochester College. She's been in the beauty industry for 40 years. And she's even worked in the hair industry in LA, where she serviced entertainers. Her goal is to encourage the dreams and aspirations of her students. She enjoys spending time with her family. She's a mother of three and a grandmother of three. And her hobbies are skating, swimming, and always looking to absorb new and creative skills in the beauty industry. She has a passion for providing guidance and encouragement to students and giving back to a new generation of stylists. Welcome, Joy.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I appreciate all the information and the support that I've gotten so far. And thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Next, we have Ty Kraus. Ty is our new supervisor of Employment Services and Workforce and Economic Development. He started in a temporary role as a job development specialist in the Workforce and Economic Development Division. Prior to that, he was employed at GST, Michigan Works, for eight years, where he led their Business Services Division. He has a master's in public administration from Northern Michigan University. And his wife and four daughters keep him hopping. His hobbies revolve around them, telling him what he's going to be doing. One time, when they went camping, it was so hot, he installed an air conditioner in their cabin. What a great guy. And he knows how to be a MacGyver when needed. So welcome, Ty. Is there anything you want to say to the board?
Just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity. I've worked in the Flint community now for a few years, and it's amazing. And the team that we have in Workforce and Economic Development, very special, very talented. And it's a pleasure to be working with them. So, thank you. And that's about it. Thanks.
All right. Next, we move on to Human Resources. We have Aria L. Hi. Aria started as a Labor Relations Specialist on January 9th, 2023. She joins us from the Human Resources Department at University of Michigan, Flint. She will be responsible for administering our labor relations contracts with the various bargaining units. She has a bachelor's degree in political science. She has a bachelor's degree in political science, and she enjoys spending quality time with her family, which includes 12 beautiful grandchildren. Her hobbies include gardening, helping others, juicing, and researching holistic approaches to health. Welcome, Aria.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to say?
I just want to say that I am overjoyed being here and being part of the Mott family. So thank you for accepting me.
All right. Kimberly has been working with us in Human Resources as a Kelly Agency employee since late 2022, and officially was hired as the HRIS Analyst on January 9th as well. She will be responsible for data-related activities and will be assisting with payroll. Her background is in HR and managed care. She has a double bachelor's degree in HR Management and Healthcare Administration. She's lived in Michigan her entire life and has attended classes at Mott. Her husband of 38 years and her have raised their three children in this community, and they're very proud to be natives of Genesee County. Her greatest passion are her six grandchildren and the happiness and joy that they bring into her life. Family time is her favorite time. Welcome, Kimberly. Is there anything you want to say?
Just thank you. I'm so glad to be here, and I do have the best team to be working with. Sorry all the other departments, but I got the best. Thank you.
And now we have Cindy Van Dam. Hi, Cindy.
Hi, Miss Mitchell.
Cindy is one of two specialists in the Disability Services Office. Having earned a master's of arts degree from Wayne State University, she has a background in vocational rehabilitation counseling in her previous role as a counselor and coach, with a 98% success rate with the clients that she served. Cindy provided mental health services to individuals that addressed issues such as anxiety and depression. She previously worked nearly 20 years at Walsh College as a counselor, academic advisor, disability services coordinator. She's a lifelong Michigan resident as well and a mother of one daughter. She's an artist, a crafter, an abstract painter who loves road trips, being outdoors, and trolling on a pontoon boat with her companion, Bill. She shares her art studio and workspace with her 19-year-old cat, Ashley. Welcome, Cindy. Is there anything you want to say?
Yes, just thank you for having me. I'm so happy to be at the college and really happy to be with the disability services team. Ellen and everyone has been just great with supporting me with everything I had to learn and just getting me up to speed, so I'm just so thrilled to be here. Thank you all.
You're welcome. And lastly, we have Joseph Stercota. Stercota? Thank you, Larry. Joseph is the new supervisor of Maintenance. He's spent seven years teaching industrial technology and construction trades in high schools. He's looking forward to working in an educational environment, knowing how much this college can provide its students and the community. He has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University in Industrial Technology, as well as a Michigan Builder's License and a Teaching Certificate for the state of Michigan. He has over 10 years of experience working in the construction industry, ranging from a residential builder to maintenance worker and project manager for MSU and Jackson National. He spends his free time with his wife, his seven-year-old son, and four-year-old daughter. They enjoy spending time outdoors and working on the family house, horse farm. Welcome, Joseph.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity. I'm excited to be here, and my first two weeks have been awesome, very welcoming from everybody, and I can let you guys know you have an awesome facilities department, and I'm excited to grow and learn with them. Thank you.
And that concludes our new employees' presentation.
And Mr. Chair, that concludes all of our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Secretary, are there any communications? We have one more special presentation. I think this is the extra special presentation.
It is, and actually, we have several that were going to come up. First, it'll be our Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, Mr. Larry Gothrup, who's going to give a budget overview.
I think it's on now. Okay, good. So, good evening, and as Dr. Beverly said, I would like to give you a presentation, just an overview of the budget. The amended budget is coming up in February. We have a couple of new board members. So I kind of want to go through the college finances, how it's laid out, the budget cycle, and then end with the travel policy that we have for the board members as well. So, I'll get started. Our budget cycle ends on June 30th. We're 12 months, so July 1 through June 30th, the initial budget's adopted in June, and also the final budget's adopted. The amended budgets I spoke to just previously will be brought to you next month. Let's say, we did have one extra budget this year that we did because of the, there are two items that we, that we had miscalculated or over-calculated in the beginning that we brought to you and corrected as soon as we found out, so. But this is a normal cycle that we have that'll be coming forward in February, the next part. Board policies. So important, 3100 budget adoption, fiscal stability, excuse me, fiscal reserves and financial stability, and the compensation philosophy. Those first three are pretty standard in most organizations. The last one is not. This is something that Mott Community College has, that most higher ed or K-12s do not, and having a compensation philosophy saying that 77% of operating expenses is the most that our sales and wages should be, benefits. So, speaking of funds, you'll hear me talk about two different funds, really. One's operating, and that's the one we focus most of our attention on, because that's where we spend all of our resource, most of our resources to run the college. So, in the operating budget, 2022, '23 was 80.6 million. You'll see this excluding UAA, I'll pass through, and that's the MIPSers contribution that's made, that we get, that we have to turn around and pass along. So I don't like to include it. It's not a part of the budget for the college to spend. It's just a pass-through. So the purpose of the operating budget is to operate the college. So instructions, student support, public service, administration overhead. Our revenue sources come from tuition, property taxes, state aid, and other. We are, as you may know, or may or may not know, we do have a balance or trust that we get dividend, an allocation each year through Huntington Bank that we bring into the general fund. Challenges, enrollment. You're going to hear us talk about enrollment a lot, and I'm sure you've heard it, not just here, but throughout the state and nationwide. Affordable tuition is part of our mission statement. We need to keep our tuition affordable. Also, funding strategic initiatives, this is extremely important as well. Each year, there are things that we need to figure out a way to pay for, based on our strategic goals, regardless of how the rest of the budget is. So we can't just stay stagnant. We don't cut our wage prosperity. We have to continue to try to be innovative and look for opportunities to grow and through our strategic plan. Just to give you a pie chart on the revenue, if you look to the left, 99, 2000, you'll see that back in that year, our state funding was $15.7 million in aggregate, in whole dollars. You'll see that the composition was tuition, property taxes, state aid, pretty equal. Not exactly equal, but pretty equal. Now, you can see in 22, '23, it has gone more tuition-based. So, the issue that we have when we're more tuition-based is our enrollment affects us much more. So back in the years when it was only one-third of tuition and our enrollment dropped, it would not affect our budget as much as it does now, because we're so much more reliant on tuition. And as you can see, the state funding, I'm sorry, it looks like the second line is covered up, but we have, I got the slide here. 17.9 million is that number. So you can see we've gone up a couple million dollars, but that's been over 22 years. So if you look at the whole base, it's not been much at all, not even inflationary. Expenditures, salaries and fringe, and this is in the general fund again, salaries and fringes, of course, are going to be our largest expense. We employ a lot of people to provide our services, our education. Contracted services and supplies are next, operations and communications, and then our transfers and capital outlay. If you take that over the course of the past 15 years, you can take any 10-year period you'd like to look at, or 15-year period, and say, "How does that lie as far as percentages?" It's going to be pretty close. This is the way we run. This is the way the college runs, percentage-wise. Reserves, extremely important. So board policy, 39, 30. You'll see the funds across the top, 01, 72, and 78. That really won't mean anything to you right now, but 01 is our general fund. We have an operating reserve. That is 10 to 20%, that's board policy, is what we'd like to have for future needs. We're currently at 15%. Maintenance and replacement and building and site funds, those are for capital needs into the future. Things that we don't know about, things that we know are going to be replaced, and mainly facilities-related. So as you can see, 3.1 million in the 72 fund, 3.6 million in the 78 fund. So, the 78 fund is fully funded to the 1% to 3% of our college depreciated assets. That number will change every year, because assets come off, assets come on, they're depreciated. Now, that's $6.7 million. That's a lot of money. I'm not going to say it's not. But understand that if we did not have our bond support from the taxpayers, we would be, we would need, we would need 10 times that amount to make sure that we had the reserve sufficient for capital needs going forward. And the bond funds, and I'll get into that next, and the capital needs, is we've had the support of the taxpayers in the county for many, many years. We've gotten bond issues through, and that's how we've done all of our major projects. Audit, we are required to have a financial statement audit completed each year by independent, qualified CPA firm. Currently, it's Raymond. It's the first year. The five prior years were done by Plant Moran, and so Raymond was awarded a five-year contract, so they'll do the audit for the next four years. Also, I want to let you know about a financial dashboard that's out there, and I can send this to you if you'd like. Actually, I think you've got a copy of it in your packets. But there's a dashboard that we developed, and it's updated each month. So if you ever want to go in, look, and say, "Hey, by division, how is, how are things looking to budget?" You can go and look at that, click on that drill down, and it's a really cool tool. It's not going to give you every detail and granular level, but a good, big picture of how we're doing budget in the, in each division. So the next thing I want to go over is the capital and bonds and other restricted funding monies. So capital means those that are not operational. That's how I'll define it for this, for this discussion. So capital funds. Our largest, and I spoke to you just briefly, is about, earlier was about the bonds. So the voters approved $80 million authorization back in March of 2020. No expiration period, no, no requirement to take the money out at any certain point in time or any, any, you know, tranches of dollars. We could do it as we needed, as projects become available or things that we need to do. So, in that, those bond funds have to be spent specifically and exactly on the ballot language. For example, and this is something that we go over with all the employees when they come into, is, you know, you'll see a lot of construction going on and things being done on campus, and we say we have to have budget cuts. Well, that doesn't make any sense. Why would you spend money on this building and then, because it's coming from a separate pool of money. Infrastructure is extremely important to the college. Maintaining our assets is extremely important, and we are fortunate to have a separate funding source to be able to keep that going. Otherwise, it would come out of the general fund. So, the purpose of this, maintaining facilities, long-term focus, as you can see, construction projects, safety and compliance items, technology and equipment. The revenue sources, in addition to bond proceeds, we have student technology fees that we charge per contact hour to the students. That is set aside for student technology. Now, as we've gone more remote, and as we've gone and offered those kinds of classes, technology's become extremely important and highly expensive and becomes quickly outdated. So, it's, this is a wonderful thing that the board, several boards ago did, set this fee up, understanding that there was a technology need on this campus that would have to be accounted for, and so that was set up. And then we do have some grants and capital appropriations. We have received state matching funds through the SBA, the State Building Authority, and we are always looking at any major projects that we have to try to get matching grants from the state. So going on to the capital outlay process with the state in order, and the way you get those funds is that we are required each year to do a five-year campus master plan, and it goes to the state Department of Management Budget. Independent facilities assessment, technology plans, enrollment trends. So what I'm trying to get at is, this is extremely comprehensive. Every single year, we go through square footage of buildings, update all those, what the programming requirements are of all the different areas on campus. It's not just our buildings, and it's just not the usage of those buildings or the layout. It's about what is actually going on at the college and any changes that have to be reported. We're also, at times, we'll take this tool and ask for a match, a state match on a project that we may need. The last one that we received with the Southern Lakes Branch Center, we received a matching grant for that. This library, this event center was done through a match with the state back in 2004, no, later than that, eight, maybe something like that, eight, nine, when I, when I first came to college. So, input from management team, faculty, staff, and community. Again, this is a very comprehensive thing, that you met one of the new facilities people, and Rod's standing right next to him, the executive director, and they're in charge of putting all this together for us. So, it's a big project. So, what I'd like to do, just briefly, this is your board policy. I just lifted some parts out of the board policy, tried to condense it for you, just as you're traveling, as you start, as you start, I think there's a couple conferences come up, ACC or ACCD, so I just wanted to kind of go over that with you briefly. Cash advances, you are, you can receive a cash advance. It's $60 per day, that's the maximum, and we have to reconcile those receipts within 30 days when you come back. And this language I put in there, I've never done it before, but the last line, you'll see on a couple different slides, unreconciled cash advance for 30 days will be referred to the Finance Audit Committee for review, but that's part of the policy that you have. Expenditure limits, everybody's interested in that. So meals, actual receipts, use of automobile, IRS reimbursement rate, that changes at least once a year. Sometimes it changes more than once a year, depending on what's going on with gas prices. Lodging, single-room rate, or the approved conference negotiator rate, gratuities cannot exceed 20%. Spouse guests, not reimbursable unless the official function requires that attendance. Incidental business-related travel and expenses, of course, are also reimbursable with proper documentation and receipts. Approval expense reports, so these expense reports will come to me. They're actually done through the president's office first. They compile them all, they do a check. I then do a double check and then release them, once I'm okay with them, and it all matches up and it agrees. The, there's a travel reimbursement form, and the president's office can help you with that. They're, they can direction where you need to go and help you fill that out. We do want that in 10 working days with the conclusion of travel, and we need that for our month ends. We need that for our accounting record, so we can get those expenses recorded. Outstanding travel must be processed before another request is submitted, and then again, you'll see that again about the travel expenses not reconciled will be referred to the Finance Audit Committee. I've been here 15 years, it's never happened, so. And that is all I had for you, and that'd be you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Are there any questions? Mr. Daley?
Just a couple of questions around the bonding. When you're, when you have a mileage past that's passed that supports the college, and then you, as I understand it, that money comes in, and of course, it's going to come in incrementally, so you're issuing debt to go ahead and make your construction. How do you balance the term between the millage term and the term of the bond?
Answer? Yeah, okay. So yeah, that's a great question. So this is a balancing act that we do, and we have help. So PFM, we have bond, those are bond consultants. We also have Dickinson Wright, who's our bond attorneys. So they help us with Ashley Moore in the initial sale and that type of thing. So, John, you're exactly right. So we have debt that's outstanding, and first of all, whatever amount of debt we have outstanding, we have no debt that has not been approved by the voters that they'll pay off. So we have no general fund debt. Whatever that debt is, we know what the period is of payment. Generally, it's fifteen years that it'll, that'll term out. At various interest rates when we sell it, they're variable. Sometimes they're callable, sometimes they're not. And so the reason I'm telling you all this is that that is all calculated each year by our bond counsel, or excuse me, our bond consultants, on this is how much you need to set your millage at. So it's a calculation done each year, and then at the end of the year, when we do the millage for the operating millage and all the other millages that we have to submit to the, to the state or to the local taxing authorities, that is one of the components that we have to look at as well. But we have kept our, we've lowered our rates since after two thousand and eight. It is dropping back down again, where I think we're at point seven-two mills right now. And so that is something that is extremely important to us. Anytime we go out, for example, if, let's say, we had a six, we have sixty million left on our authorization. I mean, we could irresponsibly say, hey, we need the sixty million dollar project. We're going to issue it right now because we have the authority, and that would take the millage rates up considerably, which we've never done, and we don't want to do.
Okay, then the second question, if I could, is just generally on a percentage basis, what's your cost of bonding versus debt issuance?
Yes, so, yeah, so the, we've never really had debt issuance, John. So we've never actually had to go to the market and get that thing, thankfully, knock on wood. So our average cost of borrowing on the, our issues are anywhere from somewhere around, if you had put an average out there, I would say about three point two, three point one maybe, in that range. Some are lower. I think the last issue that we had, some might have been slightly higher. But it's been very, very favorable. And before they enacted that new, that new federal law about refunding, we were able to actually refund or refinance a lot of our debt. But we can't do that anymore because of the tax exempt obligation and the IRS code that they changed, I think, with the Trump administration.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gothrop.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Institutional Advancement Quarterly Report.
Actually, okay, yes, I have a number of special presentations, so.
And that is Mr. Dale Wayhill, Associate Vice President of Institutional Advancement.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Chair, trustees. I'm happy to be here to present the quarterly report from the Office of Institutional Advancement. I do this every three months, and it's a cumulative report from July one through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two, so the first six months of our fiscal year. I think it's going to come up on the screen, but I, you also should have a copy of it in your packet. We'll start with the fundraising side of Institutional Advancement. So the big picture for new trustees, and a reminder for those that have come back to us, the Office of Institutional Advancement, we raise resources, external resources for this college, over and above what Mr. Gothrop described in terms of property taxes, state aid, and tuition. So these are from foundations, they're from donors, corporations, et cetera. And then the other half of what we do is based on marketing and communications and telling the story of the college to attract students and keep them here. So on the foundation and grant side, where we raise revenue, the good news is that we've got a grand total in the first six months of our fiscal year of almost three point eight million dollars. Of that three point eight million dollars that we've helped generate, one point seven million is for the strategic funding priorities. So for the audience here and for the trustees, the bottom left of this document has the six strategic funding priorities, describes them a little bit and some of our strategies, what the goals are overall for the fiscal year, and where we're at in terms of the first six months. Then up above, and at a glance, all other giving through the foundation for Mott Community College is almost four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's over and above what we've raised for those six priorities. So these are things that people didn't really want to give to one of the priorities, so they gave us money for other, other items, like scholarships, for example, or other things at the college. And then all other grants over and above those priorities is one point six million. All of that adds up to the three point seven. The highlight, which is on the right-hand side, at the end of the December, President Biden signed the omnibus budget bill, and that was passed by the House and Senate. Senator Gary Peters and Senator Debbie Stabinow, among others, supported an earmark request that our area had put in probably last March, asking for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the new Prawl Innovation Center project. So we add that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the twelve-and-a-half million that we got about a year ago through the president's efforts and Office of Institutional Advancement from the CS Mott Foundation. That all goes towards the renovation of the Prawl Center. So we're going to go on to the grants, excuse me, not the grants, the marketing and communications part of this report, which is page two. This outlines what our audiences are. Of course, the priority audience for marketing and communications is new students, whether they are coming straight out of high school, perhaps already in high school and they can dual enroll, or whether they're adult-age students and want to come back to school to increase their skills. We also focus on some marketing around retaining students that come here, based on the notion that it's easier to retain a student who's made the decision to come to Mott than recruit a new one. So there are some efforts in those areas. If you look at the bottom left-hand side, that's all of our paid media. This is a great expansion from what we were doing just a few years ago. We've got a significant paid media presence through an advertising agency called Good Marketing that works with the staff in my office in the MarCom area, as we call it. Some of the paid tactics, billboards, anytime you see a billboard out in the community, whether it's on the highway or a surface street, whether it's a static billboard or electronic, that comes out of our office in the paid media budget. We've been on radio, so Spotify, regular radio stations. We're in print, Tri-County, My City Magazine, the County Press. We're on broadcast and Facebook in terms of digital. And then the whole other column represents paid search, digital display, social media. And then we've begun, like I said, retention efforts, where we text current students and where we email current students about the services that they can access in terms of tutoring, the writing center, the math center, but also the services over in the Lenore Crowdy Center, where they can get help with all sorts of personal issues like food, clothing, and childcare. Under earned media, we've got the sponsorships that the college does. We've done twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-nine events in the first six months. You can see our press releases that we've issued, and then the social media that comes out of the college. The earned media column really is what we would also call free media. That's where the staff in Institutional Advancement and the marketing area does all of it in-house versus the paid stuff where we partner with an advertising agency. College Information Center, we get thousands and thousands of calls a year to College Information Center. Our answer rate is ninety-seven percent at peak times. We've gotten thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine calls for the first six months of the year. Lastly, the highlight is the new minimaster. Under Jason's area, they decided to launch a three-week semester that started right before the Christmas holiday and lasted into January. New for Mott Community College. Other colleges are doing it and have had success. Marketing stepped forward, supported that effort, and there were two hundred and thirty-five students enrolled, including forty-one guest students. And you can see some examples in the bottom right of, I think those are digital ads that we put out in a targeted way through Facebook and Instagram. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Madam President.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Are there any questions, trustees? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Wayhill.
Thank you.
Our next item is Informational Technology Service Quarterly Report. Cheryl Sultan, the Chief Technology Officer, here, Shelton.
Good evening. Wait for my PowerPoint to pop up because I don't have it memorized. I'm sorry. But I'm here to give you a quarterly report on information technology services. Unlike Dale's report, mine is not cumulative. It's just a discussion of what's going on in the last quarter. And it's supposed to be a joint presentation. Here it is, with both myself and Mohan Shalmasar, who is our Chief Information Security Officer. So first I want to just go over the structure of what IT looks like. We are responsible. We have enterprise services, and it talks about some of the areas we cover, which is more of the ERP system and programming and website. Our network services, which are all the switches, infrastructure, telephones, security cameras, display clocks, et cetera. Our media services, which are at work tonight, helping us with this presentation. They do smart classrooms and Zoom rooms for academics and all kinds of video productions, et cetera. And then we have computing support services, which is more or less our help desk, our virtual desktop infrastructure, which also supports our students and our employees, especially during the pandemic, so they could work remotely and access software that they might not have access to or be able to afford. And we do that in conjunction with our Chief Information Security Officer, who reports to Dr. Beverly. We work in conjunction, where they sort of drive policies and configurations and things of that nature to keep us secure. And then on the IT side, we talk about it, and then we have to sort of implement their suggestions. So that's sort of how the partnership works. Try to go over our service projects and tickets. Our tickets for the month, we actually were doing really well. And you think, well, why is it over a hundred percent? Well, obviously, we fixed a problem for something, and we were able to address several tickets that had been outstanding. So we had a pretty good quarter, I would say, compared to normal. A lot of what we do, I normally break this down by each area, but for the most part, I'm starting with the department in general, because a lot of our areas work together. We, nothing is usually just segmented into one department in our division. So we deleted three-year-old student accounts. We use Gmail as our student email system. And while Gmail is free for everybody in the world, we get it free as well, but there are limitations. So we cannot keep accounts around forever. We have many, many accounts. I'm trying to remember how many we actually deleted, but it was in the thousands. Selecting a vendor for pen testing. One of the things that's a recommendation is an annual pen test that comes from our security team. They are looking for us to do that, so we have been evaluating vendors, and we've narrowed it down to two. We're going to be selecting a vendor to do a pen test, which is a penetration test to see if they can break into our network. I forgot, you don't know the lingo, so sorry about that. We're also been upping our encryption on our end-user devices. That's another recommendation from the security team, is getting our devices as secure as possible, whether it be cell phones, desktops, et cetera. So working on that. Reviewing security procedures, which I think Mohan's going to talk about at the end, so I don't want to go too far on that. But we've been going over these for months now. Providing evidence of our security controls. So some of the things that they recommend that we implement, we have to prove we've done it. So we, we generate documentation to show that we have met those security controls. So we're not just writing these down on paper. We're proving that we're doing them. Assisting the HRIS RFQ process, we're looking at a system to help our human resource department. They're struggling with some issues, particularly payroll, right now. And so we're putting input with that process on, because of course, it's going to be a computer system. So we want to make sure it meets their needs and can function in our infrastructure. And input on the Prawl renovation project. There's a lot of work that goes into redoing a building, and we've done it many times. And it goes on for months and months and months, and it's boring, and talk about plugs and floors and where closets are going to be, and then we argue about it, and it just goes on for a long time. But it's very important, and the work is always worth it at the end because it helps our students. So in enterprise services, we've still are working on some institutional advancement software. The software that they had, which tracks all their donors and such, was at end of life. And so we're working on getting that replacement done. The minimaster support, that was a, that was a big lift, a very worthwhile endeavor, but it was a lot of work to get that minimaster set up and get students registered and make them successful. And our CRM recruit module support, we are working with our admissions area to get them some software support, to better support students and applications and such that come to the college. And it'll, we have a manual process for that now, and it's not working all that well. So we need to move to a product that is going to better support not only the students, but the staff in seeing applications come through the entire process. In our network services, we are migrating to e-fax. Fax lines are super, super expensive. And so we are trying to move to an e-fax product, because fax lines are really hard to get nowadays. And replacing our wireless, that was something you all approved last year, and we're in the process of rolling that out right now. Our firewall replacement, which is another thing that you approved for us last year, and our cameras and networks at our entrance gates. Dr. Beverly has been very adamant about campus safety and security. And we started an initiative many years ago to make sure we had enough cameras and gates and like the display clocks that you see in these rooms, et cetera, to really make sure that this campus stays safe, that we have cameras where we can work with our public safety department to see what's going on on campus at all times. And it makes a big difference, but it's a lot of work. And as a matter of fact, we meet every week with our chief of police and his staff to talk about safety and what things we need and how IT can support In our media services, we've got about twenty projects going. Those are videos that we create. Those include some of the videos that you see when, for the board information that you get. Our current projects, we just replaced the blinds here in the event center. They look beautiful. We're also replacing our info channel, which is another safety mechanism, where there are monitors on campus. They display, I will call it informational items, but when an emergency comes, they're able to be taken over by public safety to display safety information, depending on what situation's going on on campus at that time. It is, that system is at end of life, so it is not working right now. So it's really important that we get that replaced. It's a rather large endeavor because those systems aren't that easy to find. It's not like there's several to choose from. They're, they're very limited. So finding one that will work for everything that we want to accomplish has been a challenge. And the same thing goes with our emergency PA system. We have PAs on campus. Again, one of the systems is at end of life. We've been slowly rolling them out as we build new buildings. But we have some other buildings we still need to address, so we're working on that, too. Uh-oh. Okay, Mohan, are you there?
I am here.
Go ahead, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. So I would like to give a quick update on what's happening in the information security area. So first of all, security policies. When I was here last time, I had told you that we are working on security policies, and that needs to be approved and disseminated. So I'm happy to say that we have gone back and forth, working with the ITS. We have made the amendments required, and now the security policies are ready for the, for dissemination. And as I have noted here, the security policies are an umbrella set of policies that also covers what the compliance regulations require, such as PCIDSS for the payment card, HIPAA for health, healthcare information, and FERPA for the student privacy. So all of these three are taken into account when, while formulating these security policies. And the second one, as Cheryl mentioned in the couple of few, few slides ago, we did review all of the critical security controls that are in place, that have been deployed by the ITS. So these are based on industry's secure standard called CIS. And so there are about eighteen of them. Each of them cover particular domains, such as access controls, security awareness, network security, and so on. So multiple of them. So, and we have gone through each and every one of those. You know, within this CIS, we have, we identified what is, what is really critical that needs to be in place at Mott today, so that we can so that we can prevent any kind of data breach or any significant security incidents. So that's what I'm reporting here, saying that the critical security controls based on the CIS are in place. And so Cheryl also mentioned selection of a pen testing vendor. So what happens is, when that vendor is selected, when the pen testing is performed, which means that pen testing is supposed to test the security infrastructure that is in place. So it will let us know, you know, how well we have done. So we are waiting for such a test to happen and for the report. And then last quarter, we also performed, for the ITS, the entire ITS, including the managers and the, and the direct reports, and incident response training. And we also conducted a successful tabletop exercise, where we, we threw it through in scenarios and simulated by way of discussion and identified what needs to be done in which area. So that was a successful exercise that we conducted. And then I'm happy to say the awareness training is up to date. Everyone takes the training on time. And going forward, it'll be an annual training for everybody and also for whoever comes on board, new at Mott. And so what's, what's, what's next? So I'm working, the information security team is working on a security posture report. So they'll be putting all this together and providing a comprehensive report as to what was it before, and how was Mott a year before, and what is Mott today? So that's the kind of comparison we'll make, and then I'll be providing that report to you. Thanks very much, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions, trustees? None, see? Thank you, Cheryl. Next up is Title IX, Sheri Novak, Associate Vice President, Human Resources.
A part of this is also VP Jason Wilson as well. Please come to the...
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you. Chairman Everman and the Board of Trustees. Jason and I are here to provide an update on college activities regarding Title IX, which pertains to gender-based discrimination. Our Title IX coordinator resides in Vice President Wilson's office. We will review what Title IX states, Mott's complaint history, our responsibilities, the results of our recent internal audit, and proposed regulatory changes. Okay. Next slide. So Title IX states, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, denied, excuse me, be denied the benefits of or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." Next slide. "The college has board policies that detail who is responsible for developing Title IX procedures and enforcement, as noted here in Board Policy 5201." Later we'll see that it's also noted in Board Policy 5200, 5202, and 7005. Next slide. Mott's experience going back to the last fiscal year and year-to-date is on the screen here. We had a total of two complaints in fiscal year '21-'22 and four year-to-date this fiscal year. Excuse me. We had more from staff, faculty, and other this fiscal year. There were no findings in fiscal year '21-'22, and there have been two findings year-to-date this fiscal year.
And for general information, the student complaints, or not even complaints, but the student aspect of Title IX really revolves around students notifying us that they are pregnant. And students have rights, if they notify us of being pregnant during a semester, that we have to respond to to allow them to be successful. So most of our Title IX engagement with students over several semesters has been around pregnancy versus assault and other things of that nature.
Next slide. So Title IX prohibits a wide variety of sex-based discrimination, as noted here, in addition to the Violence Against Women Act and the Clery Act. Next slide. Noted here are the levels of program governance in the law. The Code of Federal Regulations, college policies, the college itself, and guidelines from the Department of Education. Next slide. These are actions we take to regularly review our programs, such as noted here, ongoing legislative review, program assessment, and updating language. Next slide. "The results of our current program review are summarized here. We reviewed existing policies. We updated our Title IX grievance procedures." Next slide. "We updated the grievance, excuse me, updates to the grievance procedures are noted here. They include added sections, such as outreach and initial assessment, instructions on making a report, and revising the early resolution." Next slide. "The remaining results of our audit are on the screen listed here. We separated Title IX from HR investigations. We're revising our complaint form. We're in the process of selecting a third-party hearing officer. We've provided training, and we've updated the contacts on our website." Next slide. "There are proposed changes by the Department of Education from July 2022. It could take 12 months for formal rulemaking. The proposed changes would expand the scope beyond the education program and beyond the U.S., allowing complaints by prior students, accepting complaints verbally, requiring certain employees to notify a Title IX coordinator." And the next slide. "And the rest are noted here, offering informal resolution, eliminating requiring live hearings, streamlining procedures whom only employees are involved, and changing the 10-day review period." That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, trustees? Seen no questions? Thank you very much. Are there any communications?
Yes, we have some comments from the public.
Thank you.
First off, we have John Cherry, and his topic is "A Welcome and Also a Greeting From the State Senate."
Well, good evening, members of the board, President...
John?
There we go. Yep. All right, good evening, members of the board, Chair and President Walker-Griefea. I just wanted to come up and offer my congratulations to all the new and returning members. Nearly every member of my household has taken classes at this institution. Both my wife and I have. And my daughter graduated from preschool across the street there this past spring. The one member who hasn't is my five-month-old son, and I guarantee you, he will be coming when he gets to the right age. Really. And in fact, I'd say, the preschool that is primarily for use of the students and those of us who are not students get to have the extra slots, I think it's the best one in the county. You guys have done, done a great job providing that service to your students in the community. And really, I just wanted to let everybody know what a wonderful institution we have in this community, the great leadership that has existed here. The employees, the leadership team, and the leader who's put that together. The Mott Community College has been routinely recognized as a national and state leader. It seems like every year, there's a recognition, sometimes more than once a year. And with the president being elected, the Chair of the Mott Community College, I mean, excuse me, the Michigan Community College Association Board, that really speaks to the respect and esteem that exists across the state for this institution and its leadership. The board here has a great opportunity to do wonderful things in our community. Mott has been vital to a lot of the economic development efforts and successes that we've been having in our community. We've been doing, moving in a great direction in recent years in achieving great things, and Mott has been a wonderful part of that. And in addition to providing vital training and education services to employers and prospective employers, Mott is great at making sure that those career opportunities are accessible to all the members of our community. We're really at a point where we have the opportunity, as a community and as a state, to be transformative. And this institution has the opportunity to be transformative. We're in a very great spot, and I was very pleased when I became aware of the fact that my chair is, the Chair of the Michigan Senate Appropriations Committee, Senator Sarah Anthony, is actually sorority sisters with your president and friends with your president. And so I'm looking at exploiting that relationship to the greatest degree that I can to make sure that we're providing more opportunities for this community. So thank you for all the work of existing board members, the leadership team, the employees, and I'm looking forward to the great work that all of you together exist, prior and new board members will be doing for our community and our state. Thank you.
Next, we have Leonard Mardell from Davison, and he would like to speak on the board. Leonard Mardell from Davison. Okay, moving on. We have Kelly Moore, and she submitted through writing, response, or I guess you could say from the incoming board, and she wanted to say...
"Good evening, Mott Community College Board of Trustees. It is a new day for Mott Community College. My name is Kelly Moore, and I'm a taxpayer and resident of Mott Community College School District. I have the privilege of living near the border of Lapeer and Genesee Counties. The last two elections in 2020 and 2022, we, the voters, have spoken loud and clear and voted in change to our board at the ballot box. It is my hope that this will be read before the vote for new officers. I want the trustees to remember that they work for us, and I am calling on some major changes to the college. That change starts with electing new officers. I fully support a new wave of leadership. It is time we start putting the focus on education, not social issues. Mott Community College is a place to get a quality education, be trained, not push an internal agenda. You now have the opportunity to turn the page and reboot the college for the betterment of all students, staff, and taxpayers. It is time we start asking questions and demanding answers. The days of sitting back and letting the college be a political action committee are over with. The people have spoken. I encourage you to start reviewing the inner workings of the college and find solutions to fix it. Something needs to be done about the constant cyberhackings of students' accounts and the declining enrollment. Why would you want to attend Mott if you, if your account and personal data could be hacked? Also, the Mott district covers multiple counties. Let's start acting like it. For years, it seems like the college has been infiltrated with a certain political party. In my opinion, that party has used the college as a springboard and training ground. It is very clear, and the proof is in the press releases the college has issued over the years. If you want to be a lobbyist or social warrior, resign. This is a place for learning and is to be apolitical. That goes for the administration, too. In conclusion, I am calling on change to the, to this board and to investigate the operations of the college. We voted in change, and we would be, it would be nice if you would, you would honor the voters' wishes. The best days are ahead for Mott Bears."
Lastly, we have Mary Hughes of Swartz Creek, and she wants to speak on the topic of Dr. Beverly.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hughes, and as you said, I'm from Swartz Creek. And I'm here because I have a concern. But first of all, I would like to just address you all as the board and the Chair. And I would like to apologize, because as a person of the community, we didn't know the process that we were supposed to go through. And it seems like it brought about a little bit of irritability. So at any rate, I just would like to apologize for that. Okay, but I'm here as a citizen, and I would like to say, and on behalf of Dr. Beverly. I'm also a alumnus and proud to say that I was a nursing student and graduated in 1990. So here at Mott Community College is very close to my heart. But I'm also, I've heard a strong rumor, and I hope that this isn't the case, that they want to terminate Dr. Beverly as the president of Mott Community College. I'm very concerned about that, and I hope that that's not the case, especially since the inception of Mott Community College being incepted as a community college 57 years ago. 57 years ago. And you've had seven presidents, seven presidents during that time. And she's the first African-American president. Not only that, and she's the first female. So I'm here in support of her, not only because she's black, but because she is qualified, and she has done an extremely wonderful job in the community. And as I sit here, and if that is the case, that her position is under consideration to be terminated, I'm here to ask why. Especially, she haven't even, you said it tonight, she haven't even been evaluated. So under what reason would she be terminated? I'm asking that. I'm really concerned about that. And so all I can say tonight is that, as I look at your mission statement, the very last sentence of your mission statement, it says, "You are here to improve the overall quality of life in a multicultural community." I'm saying tonight that, as an African-American woman myself, I know what I have been through, and I can only imagine what she had been through. And I see what we're going through in our society today as racial divide and inequality. And we deserve a seat at the table as well. and we deserve a seat at the table as well. And I'm asking you to search your hearts and do what's right, and wonder what, under what condition would you terminate her from her position? I'm asking you to search your heart. It's enough of racial inequality going on today. It's enough of evilness going on today. We need to come together in love, not hate, but love. And like I say, we deserve a right at the table. I'm asking you, I'm asking you to please examine your heart. We have a right as well. We have a right. We have a right for racial equality. We have a right that she can go and come into our community and represent us as well. If you're not a part of a certain culture, sometimes you don't understand what other cultures are going through. So we're asking today to do the right thing, bring forth racial equality, bring forth racial inclusion, be transparent. We shouldn't even have to be here, hearing this in the community, that there's a possibility that she's going to lose her job, if there was transparency. I truly ask for your integrity of being a board, because we vote for you. You work for us. We vote for you, and we depend on you. And I thank you for listening to my voice.
Lastly, we have Dr. Alfred O'Reilly from Mount Morris, and she wants to talk on the future of Mott Community College, as well as comment on Dr. Beverly.
Good evening to the board and to all of you, the constituents and all the people that's in this place tonight. I, too, as a citizen of this community, have a concern that, concern about Dr. Beverly Grifia. And I don't know if you've made some, or had some conversations in other places, but I want to say this. She's a woman of integrity. She's a woman of class. She's compassionate. She cares about her job. I know that for a fact. I know how she interacts with students, and I'm here tonight to say, too, that I want you to think about it whenever you do get ready to make some changes. And as Minister Mary Hughes said, that we have a right to sit at the table. Most of the people at the table, most, are Caucasians or a different race. And so we want to keep her, not because of the color of her skin, but because the content of her character. And I want you to know that we are better together. And I think I've said enough.
That concludes public comment for today.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the amendments for November 14, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments? So moved?
2022.
2022.
2022.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Next, I'd like to call for approval of the special committee of the whole board retreat for December 12, 2022. So moved?
Support.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those nay? I think the ayes have it. Under the informational reports, the MCCA Board of Directors, Trustee Daley?
I have nothing new to add since my last report.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. ACCT Board of Directors, Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, the National Legislative Summit is going to be held February 5 through the 8, and there are several of the board members who are going. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some good, there's training available there, a lot of good presentations. Hopefully, we'll be able to, as a group, take several, so that way we can share the most information. Also, April is Community College Month, and this month, this year, ACCT is sponsoring an art contest for slogan and logo. It's been sent to the colleges, and I'd encourage us to participate in that, seeing the talent that we have at our college and our arts program. I think that we would be up for consideration for another national award. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Under unfinished business, item 1.11, amendment to board policy 5801.
Chair Noack is going to come forward to introduce the second reading of 1.11.
Good evening, Madam President, Chairman Everman, and board. So this is regarding the drug-free campus, and we presented this at the November board meeting. And I believe there was, the process is to go for a vote. Is that correct?
You're just going to present the information about it and why you brought it forward?
Yep, so we had present, I don't think I have a slide up there, at least I didn't prepare one, I mean, from before I did, but anyway, we had suggested, recommended that we amend or revise the board policy for the drug-free workplace to, currently it says that we will drug test all new employees. So what we were suggesting is that we revise it to say we will drug test employees in safety-critical positions. And the reason for that is, the current process is just a point-of-in-time drug test. When you, when we trust people, excuse me, we test people when they're first hired, we don't do anything after that. So when we held our policy in abeyance during COVID, to allow clinics to treat COVID patients and to obey the governor's orders to shelter in place, we saw no increase in incidents at work where people were found to be using drugs. So we want to remove barriers to hire. We've done a benchmark in community colleges in Michigan. Of those that responded to our survey, there was only one college that's continuing to drug test new employees. All the others either discontinued it, or will continue it to, excuse me, will continue to do it for those positions that are safety critical, like in childcare or public safety. There's also been a change in the law in terms of how marijuana is handled and the fact that it's legal. So there's other reasons that this is now a best practice, so we're raising this as an issue for decision.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Trustees, are there any questions?
No question. What is the average cost of doing drug tests, the way, I mean, on every employee that we incur? Do you know, like, on average, like, how much is it even per person?
Yeah, I'll ask Rebecca Martz, because I'm sure she knows that off the top of her head. She's a talent staff development manager. What is the cost of a hair test? We do hair tests also, which is more.
Would you please come forward so you can use the microphone?
It's about $60 per hair test.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? What is the pleasure of the board on this issue? Would you like to move it forward? Would you like to table it? Or would you like to approve it?
I make a motion to move it forward at the recommendation of staff who handle HR.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Freeman, a second by Mr. Reyes. Are there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Daley, and make sure your microphone's on, please.
I got it. Clarify for me what you mean by move it forward. So within the, we're being asked to move forward with the readings, correct? It's a policy that needs to be revised and has to go through a process, correct?
Item 1.11 is the board resolution. That's before the board tonight. So what you're being asked to do is modify it as recommended by administration.
So we've reached the point where we've done two readings, and this will be the vote for approval or disapproval?
Correct. This is the second reading, so the board is now permitted to vote.
But his motion will bring it to a vote for decision.
So then, yeah, let me revise the motion then. The motion is then to approve the policy within campus.
Excuse me, can?
Yes, Mrs. Couch.
Okay. So what you're saying is you want to vote for the change or not leave it like it is?
Yes.
Which is, everyone has to be tested. Like, if you leave that like it is?
No, I'm talking about the change, that actually the test is only for, like, emergency, public safety, whatnot.
The current policy requires every new employee to be tested.
Right.
The recommendation from administration is to amend the current policy so that drug testing occurs in those situations where it's a safety, they're going to measure safety, and those that are in safety-sensitive positions will still continue to be drug tested, but it will not be for everyone.
Well, let me, let me straight, let me get this straight then. If we leave it like it is, then everyone has to be drug tested that comes to, applies for a job?
So the motion, is it okay?
So, please, Madam Attorney.
The motion currently on the floor is to amend the policy.
Yes, to change it.
To change it. So if you want to move forward, you would vote yes.
So if we want them to be, if we want them to be drug tested, then we leave it like it is?
Correct, and you would vote no.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Thank you, Mrs. Couch. Trustee Swanson?
I have a question on...
Please move your mic, sure your microphone is on.
All right. I normally help pick them up well. Anyway, I'll speak up. Get out of here. Does, will this affect insurance at all? As far as, I own a company, and if we were to do this, our insurance costs would go up. They require us to test everybody. So do we know if there's any, you know, is it going to affect our insurance?
I would have to look into that and get back with you, but I'm not aware of any reduction we get in our rates or any increase that we would get.
Well, we wouldn't get a reduction. It would go up considerably if we did this.
Okay.
Because we talked about that since marijuana is legal now. And I don't know what the, the insurance company put a limit on what you could have in your bloodstream. I don't have that with me right now, but I can check with my secretary and get that information. So I just question that.
Okay.
Are there any, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah. So basically, with drug testing, this is done just when people are hired?
Mr. Freeman?
Question. Okay, so can you please ask whether or not it's done one time at beginning?
We would like to ask if this is done one time at the beginning.
Yes, the board policy only states that drug testing is done for all new hires.
I see. So, and then likely follow-up testing would happen if there was any sort of behavior which would be odd or suggest that they may be under the influence? Like if a person, like, there are complaints, and say they smelled of marijuana, they are acting erratically?
Could you answer the question, please?
So we don't have a policy that would state how we handle that. It's not listed in that policy. We would have to just handle that on an individual basis.
So essentially, the drug test is really no guarantee that the person abstains from any drug use after the fact. I mean, I was young once, and I knew the game of, you're applying for a new job, you better be clean for at least a month, and then you're able to do anything after the fact. So to me, the fact that you're doing drug testing at the time of employment, and then we just changed that policy to make sure that we're just doing this, like other colleges, where we've just heard that there's only a couple that do what we're doing, which is more restrictive, and other people have just let it go, because quite honestly, it doesn't stop drug use with our employees. So essentially, we're just doing it because it's what we've always done and what we think people do, but honestly, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't curb that behavior, I would suggest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Daley?
I don't believe the purpose of an entry-level test like that is to curb in future employment. I believe it's designed to prevent that from entering the workplace. And it's interesting in your discussion, I'm just as concerned when you're telling me you don't have an HR policy in place to deal with an employee that we find is working under the influence. And if we, that's probably even, we're probably even more vulnerably there than we are in this situation.
Mr. Chair, could I speak to that?
Madam Attorney, please.
I just wanted to bring to the trustee's attention, there is a board policy, 5801, drug-free workplace controlled substances. So it does prohibit employees from being under the influence of controlled substances, which would give the college the ability to investigate and look into that and potentially address it through the disciplinary process if that is an issue.
Well, having the policy on paper is really great, but having the HR director tell me that we don't have an effective policy for dealing with it really troubles me.
So I'd just like to add, thank you, Amber. I haven't memorized all the policies, so I'm sorry that I don't recall it saying that, but generally, when this happens, a supervisor's responsible for determining if an employee is fit for duty. So we do have established practices, processes for that. It's just how we manage performance. If somebody's not fit for duty for any reason, we have, we know how to handle those situations. HR partners with the manager to take care of the employee and make sure that the business is being conducted and people are safe.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Daley, your comment needs to be emphasis added on our minutes. Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, I noticed that in the survey, it said five community colleges do not require drug and alcohol screening, three do require it some degree, and two in all. Do we test for alcohol as well? Is that one of the drugs that we test for?
No, we do not test for alcohol. Not upon hire. Not upon hire.
Just clarification. Not upon hire. Do you test for that afterwards?
We, not that I'm aware of, I just wanted to clarify that when we do the 10-panel test as part of the preplacement process, it does not test for alcohol.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Couch?
I'd like to make a motion to leave it.
Wait, wait, Mrs. Couch. There is a motion on the floor. Mr. Freeman?
I didn't hear you say motion, so.
Thank you.
You didn't say motion.
So there's a motion on the floor. Mr. Daley?
I have a procedural question. What is the difference with regards to implementation in not getting a second and letting it die versus bringing it up and voting against it?
I have a question, Mr. Daley, also along that line, because at the last meeting, I don't recall, we took a vote on this. We just had the explanation of what this was. So we're going to refer this to our attorney for an answer. Is that okay with you, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
In the November meeting, it was a first reading, so the Board was not being asked to take action. This is the second reading. This is the opportunity for the Board to take action on the policy as amended. So that's the motion on the table. If that motion fails, the Board policy stays as it currently is, where all new employees will continue to be drug tested.
What is, that doesn't answer my question, though. My question was the difference between having the motion die for lack of a second versus bringing it up and voting, voting on it if it's voted down? What is the difference between those two?
Well, I believe we already had a second. Trustee Freeman brought forth.
And then I believe it was Mr. Reyes, is that correct?
And Mr. Reyes was the second, and we're in discussion.
I missed the second, then I withdraw my question.
That, that vote would be to change it, though, is what his was.
That's what's on the floor right now.
That's right. I wanted to make that clear so the new, the new trustees would understand that.
Are there any other questions? Because of Mr. Daley, it looks like you're moving for a question. Okay. Given the nature of this question, I'm going to ask that we do a roll call vote and that our Board Secretary Assistant will perform this for us. And could you, it's a yes or a yea to pass it, and a nay or a no to not pass it. Is that correct?
So trustee Freeman motions to move to vote on amending Board policy at the recommendation of administration to revise Board policy on drug testing for future new hires. Chairman Everman?
And then no is not to perform it, correct?
It'd be no.
No means you're voting against the recommendation to change the policy.
I don't want to change it.
So you want to vote no?
No.
Trustee Freeman?
Yea.
Trustee Couch?
No.
Trustee Reyes?
Aye.
Trustee Daley?
No.
Trustee Swanson?
No.
Trustee Wilcott?
No.
The motion has failed. Five to two.
Five to two, the motion's failed.
Under new business, we have individual items. 1.12, the Treasurer's Report. Are there any questions?
Shouldn't we, do we move to receive or? I make a motion to receive the Treasurer's Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor by signifying, by saying aye?
Aye.
Those by signifying by saying nay? The ayes have it. Item number 1.13, Treasurer's Report for December of 2022.
I make a motion to receive the Treasurer's Report for December 2022, which is item 1.13.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those by nay? The ayes have it. Item number 1.14, conferring of honorary associate degrees and resolutions of appreciation for Anthony Branch and Anne Figueroa. Point of, point of order?
We did that.
We already did.
Already did that, and?
It's on my sheet up here. Okay. Administrative items. The President's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of executive cabinet members who will be sharing highlights about their departments. We're going to start first with Jason Wilson.
Dr. Beverly, before you do do that, I don't think we voted on the honorary degrees, though. We presented them, but I don't think the vote, I don't think the Board yet.
So we just have to do the resolution?
You just have to do the resolution.
Oh, okay.
You need a motion, you need a second and discussion.
I make a motion to accept item 1.14, which is a resolution of appreciation for Anthony Branch.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Anthony Branch. Item number 1.15, what is the pleasure of the Board?
We have to make a motion. I make a motion to accept item 1.15, conferring of honorary associate's degree and resolution for appreciation for Anne Figueroa.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. We now move to the administrative items. The President's report.
Sophie P. Wilson, please.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Mr. Chair. Okay, I apologize. We'll have to update my slides and the presentation, but I'll, I'll speak to them and try to be brief, considering the time. My area trustees is, is called student academic success. And we moved to aligning academic affairs and student success services, the traditional anchor arms of the institution, and aligning them together at the onset of the pandemic. And the reason we did that is because we understood that we needed to really serve and understand our students from a comprehensive lens of what their in-classroom and their out-of-classroom experience was. We wanted our decisions as we began to navigate the pandemic and subsequently emerge from the pandemic to be more holistic in that regard. So the traditional areas that we have at the college in terms of academic affairs are really in three main buckets. We have our academic transfer programs and courses, so these are courses that students who wish or are interested in pursuing a four-year degree will come with us and take. So these are your Englishes, biology, math, psychology, fine arts. Talk a little bit about how we've reorganized these courses and these programs in a second. Then we have our career and technical programs and courses. So these are our health sciences, our technology courses, our culinary, business courses. These are our courses that our students, at the conclusion of their credentials, are looking to find employment and, and really going right into the workforce. Then we have our non-instructional, there we go. Thank you. Then we have our non-instructional programs. This really involves the support arm of academic affairs, if you will. So our Center of Teaching and Learning, our academic operations, tutoring, our educational partnerships that we have with institutions, our distance education management, as you know, that's really become popular. So that really represents, again, that third arm in academic affairs. For student success, the traditional student success services, you have your enrollment-related services. So this is admissions, recruiting, placement testing, our enrollment center, our career and enrollment center, that's where we actually help students enroll in their classes. Our services that are retention-related, so that's academic advising, our success coaching, our counseling, disability services, student life and athletics, and certainly financial aid. We understand that we have to provide relevant amounts of aid, scholarships, and other grants to lower the cost and allow our students to continue through to their credentials. The area where we stand out, though, nationally and certainly in the state is in our comprehensive support services anchored by the Lenora Crowdy Family Life Center. We are a national leader, members of the Board, in how we wrap around a student and provide everything from food, clothes, housing, childcare, all of what research says are impediments to student success. We do that very well. We are constantly asked about how we do that. The President and myself will be presenting on our Crowdy Center for maybe the second or third time this April in Denver. It's just something that we do very well. In addition to that, we have with us the Trio Programs. These are U.S. Department of Education grants that allow us to bring in students as a cohort and keep them pointed towards transferring their four-year goals. And we also house a upward bound program as well there and a special populations grant from the state to get underrepresented populations into careers. So women in manufacturing as an example of that. So when you talk about what really shapes and drives what we do in student services, student success services, academic affairs, student academic success, the best way for me to codify that and bring that to you is we really develop strategies and implement the strategies that are informed by your priorities. Your priorities, state legislative priorities, MCCA, works on behalf of colleges across the state, and certainly the Department of Ed. We use really what our bellwethers, as I refer to them, are communicating to us to really shape how we deliver instruction and support to our students. It's very important that we're in step and aligned as an institution with the priorities that you have. One of your number one priorities is student success. That drives a lot, that drives everything that we do. So we always can connect back to what you're telling us and what you're communicating back to us in the classroom and as we provide support. That's something that'll be critical for us moving forward as we look to emerge. I talked about our recent reorganization. We know that the state is in a, in a push to increase the number of graduates by 2030. In order for us to do that, we wanted to really make our programs more vertical, so to get our academic programs aligned under one divisional structure so that the course planning, the sequencing, the scheduling was all seamless, so that students who were looking to transfer or graduate, we were planning courses and so forth for that student as a group, as opposed to students who might be taking math, being scheduled one way, and students who might be taking English being scheduled another way. So they wouldn't run into things like conflicting course times or things of that nature. We're doing, we've done the same thing in aligning our career and technical education. Our academic programs and our comprehensive student support really represents our biggest strengths at this time. As you continue to hear, we're constantly up for awards and other accolades about the work that we do. We're really proud of that. But as Larry alluded to, our biggest concerns are enrollment growth, so new enrollment, and then annual retention. That means bringing students from fall to fall, so making sure that students return after they have sat out a summer, so to speak. We do well in terms of academic persistence. That is, once we get a student, not many of our students leave us midsemester, and students who come in fall will typically return in winter. It's bringing them from fall back to the next fall that we're looking at in terms of addressing. And as we, we've laid out and I've alluded to, we're an award-winning institution. I just gave you a few of the awards, some that you've heard about here. You know, the Land Awards, you'll hear about more next month. But certainly our PTK designation, we've had a couple students, we brought an international presentation to you a few months ago. Couple of our students have been awarded a trip to Tunisia as a part of Study Abroad Program. Last year, we had the National Faculty of the Year, Dr. Mara Fulmer. Al Perry, if he's still behind me, has been recognized as a 40 by 40, under 40 in this area, and, and we talked about Coach Smith. So again, we are really looking to move forward with what we're doing. We recognize our challenges in enrollment, but your, your institution is strong and healthy in terms of what we do to deliver success with our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam President? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and Chair Everman and trustees. Have the pleasure this evening of sharing with you an overview of the programs and services in the Workforce and Economic Development Division. Actually, if you could put the slides, slides back. You can see here just an overview of the various departments and administrative areas that are in the Workforce Division. We have a fully comprehensive Workforce Division here at Mott Community College that provides a variety of services from student employment, career training, talent development, corporate services and customized training, youth programs, and then some programs that we do to support youth in terms of digital and financial literacy. One thing that you'll find really unique about us is that our division is charged with, with raising funds to support a variety of activities, including the activities that happen within the division through grants with the, with the institutional advancement team, through contracts, and then sometimes through fees for service. Currently, we have a total of 25 individual and independent funding streams totaling almost $10 million. One thing that is really important to highlight as well is that we have been recognized nationally for doing something. for doing something to support our students in our community, and that is through leveraging, embroidering funding. We embrace a philosophy of screening in. So when students come to us, it is our job to find out what funding exists to support whatever their need is and then figuring out a way to get that resource to the student without the student sometimes even knowing that we're pulling all of these things together to support them. And so both the American Association of Community Colleges and the Education Strategies Group last year recognized the college for the creative and innovative work that we're doing to braid and leverage funds. We also provide a number of short-term career training programs, and you'll see some of those listed here. They're in a variety of areas. These are programs that are really one year or less, some of them are as short as one month, that lead directly to employment but also are coupled with some type of industry credential or either a third-party licensure or state license that will help an individual both to have the ability to go directly to employment and/or to return to pursue one of our other programs in the credit area. So we like to say that they're both stackable and portable. Last year, we were recognized by the New America and Lumina Foundations for this work and in particular for ensuring that these credentials are embedded in our programs. And that recognition came with a $50,000 award for us to contribute to student success initiatives here at the college. We work with labor market information and analytics to make sure that our programs are meeting the needs of the local community. And you'll see here highlighted four programs that we launched this year. One, a sterile processing technician, electric line worker pre-apprenticeship program, the Public Works Academy, which you heard a little bit about earlier, and then a new program that helps individuals learn how to design software for Apple software applications. So again, we're always on the cutting edge with looking at new opportunities for our students and for employers in our community. And speaking of employers, we have the responsibility of developing new partnerships that benefit our students and also benefit our employer partners. This year, we are counting up just over 50 new partnerships that we've created. Many of those are for direct placement opportunities for students, sometimes a part-time opportunity while they're in school. Others are full-time career opportunities being made available for students, work-based learning through apprenticeships, internships, or externships. And then we work with employers and partners often also to identify ways for them to contribute back to the college for ways that might benefit our students outside of the classroom. The Mobile Learning Lab is also under the responsibility of the Workforce Development Division. We launched just over a year ago. It is a classroom and laboratory on wheels. It has a space in it that is modular and can be customized to deliver a number of types of training, primarily under an advanced manufacturing platform, but we can do other things in the lab as well. We have taken it to a number of community locations, both public and private, K-12s, career expos, and we have done customized training to a number of sites. Within the first year, we've had almost 30 separate organizations to engage with us for utilization of the mobile app. And then lastly, in Workforce and Economic Development, we often have the opportunity to engage in some really unique strategic initiatives and special projects. We, in October, were able to launch with a standing-room-only crowd our Workforce Promise Initiative, which is really our way of committing to both our employer community and to our students that they will be prepared for opportunities as they avail themselves. And if they are not prepared, we will customize and design remediation plans for them with an employer to get the skills that they need to be fully ready to perform on the job. And so we've put that stake in the ground, and we're really excited about being one of the first colleges in the United States of America to make that declaration and to stand behind the students that we provide this Workforce Promise endorsement for. The second initiative here that you will see is emerging, and this is what you will hear more about, it's our Total Workforce Solutions Talent Management Agency. And so we are going full-blown with our efforts to ensure that our students, when they complete a program at Mott, will have the ability to be matched appropriately with employment opportunities and that employers who come to us will be able to find the talent that they need to be successful. And it's our way of shoring up community assets and making sure that we're an anchor for this community. Thank you.
Next, we have ABP Sherry Nowak speaking on human resources, and that'll be followed by our CFO, Larry Gothron.
Hello, Madam President, Chair Person Everman and Board. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit more about who we are in human resources, what we do, and talk about improvements that we've made over the last year. So who we are is on the left there. We have a team of 12, and I would highlight Laura, Kristy, Susan, and Rebecca. They are long-term employees, have been here around 15 years. Everybody else is new within the last year or two. So we're located in CS Mott in CM 117. We also have two temporary, excuse me, two student assistants, Bea Christensen and Madeline Caddill, that have been with us. We used to have a temporary, but we decided to employ students to give them work experience. And we are responsible for the full employee lifecycle. It's a wonderful role of partnering with supervisors and leaders to create a high-performing, positive work environment to support employee and student success. So this is what we do. There's a lot here which represents some of what we do. Overall, we deliver programs and services that attract, retain, develop, and transition our human capital, our people. So we start with recruiting them, moving on to onboarding them, developing, and then retaining and transitioning them. The current and future of how we do this is through the use of technology and data. Payroll is noted in items one through five, but HR, excuse me, payroll is not noted in items one through five, but HR is also responsible for the bi-weekly payroll for an average of 700 employees. So we focus on technology-driven processes. These are some of the areas at the bottom there for those services that we're transitioning to using technology. And I'll be reviewing these areas as we go forward and evaluate the employee experience with a focus on continuous improvement. So these are the improvements, if you look at human resources during 2022 and earlier versus now toward the end of 2022 and today. In the past, HR was not fully staffed. We had no new hire orientation. There's a list there of how many people we hired, from 67 down to 39 and back up to 60. If you can compare that to now, we've hired 147 employees in 2022, more than a 200% increase. We did that through transitioning how we're doing selection. In the past, HR facilitated every interview, and then the vacancies doubled. So now we've shifted to using search committees. We also have automated our exit interviews, so we can compile data on the employee experience. It used to take us a long time to post positions, and now we post them instantly. We also post them internally first, which has increased, excuse me, increased our hiring from within from 12% to 38%. We've also expanded our new hire orientation to three days and recently expanded it to include employees that are in new jobs, existing employees into their new positions because we didn't want to assume that they knew everything about the college if they had been in their prior role for some time. We're providing monthly employee training, job-specific and compliance-related training. And I want to mention that this was achieved through our people. I want to take a moment to thank Kristy Dolly and Rebecca Martz for their resilience and commitment during this difficult transition time as HR was transformed to what it is today, and to Dr. Beverly for her leadership and support. That concludes my presentation.
Good evening again. So I just kind of want to run through the finance and administration side of things. I like to say that we don't do anything really exciting, but we do a lot of things to keep things running. And that's what we do with the background. And I want to say the background, the support of the college and the things that we do on a daily basis keep everything else running so that others can do those exciting things. So let me just go through accounting. Our accounting staff, Nicole Woods, she's our Executive Director of Accounting and Budget. She has three senior accountants, two other accountants, and then a loss prevention risk analyst and a accounts payable technician. So obviously, they're processing bills, doing the accounts payables, receivables, purchase cards, foundation accounting, brewing club accounting, the audit, grants, many, many different things that are going on at the college. Purchasing, purchasing, we have a three-person purchasing function there in the current Mott building. Jody Michaels, our purchasing manager. And then we have Lupe Aguilar and Kimberly Delish, who are the two purchasers. So you can see that they're compliant as well with, or maybe on the accounting side of grants, this is with federal and state guidelines, regulations to buy competitively. We've done an exceptional job of bidding, contracts out, making sure we're getting the best value, promote, support, environment, diverse equity, inclusion as well, and then to support college with the materials and services needed to maintain the operations. Just in a nutshell, this is just a kind of a quick overview about our purchasing and our thresholds. You can see we have different thresholds, less than 3,000. We can make a purchase without competitive solicitation, we get three quotes. I'm sorry, the ones at 3,000 are over, up to 35, we get a minimum of three quotes. So that means we just have to go, instead of having sealed bids or that whole procurement process, which takes a long time to do, we can just get, obtain three separate quotes. Over 35 requires a public solicitation, and then over $125,000 is required by the Board of Trustees, and it also includes a public solicitation. Also consortia contracts, this is something that's huge, this helps out purchasing if there's already state negotiated contracts, we can get in on those deals as well. And we do post on Bid for Michigan. Actually, it's not Bid for Michigan anymore, it's, I think, on My Deal instead of Bid for Michigan. But we do try to post those so that we can get the best rates and also get as many people involved in our procurement process as possible as far as getting number of quotes. Cashier's office, Wanda Brown is our Bursar, Jamie, we have Jamie, Sierra, Nicole, and Lisa. Two of those last two are part-time temps. We utilize part-time temps because we have expanded office hours, and instead of having full-time employees and hiring those people, we find that we can have a couple of part-time temps to help through those periods, especially there are peak periods at registration time. There's also peak periods at the payment due date deadlines that we are open longer. And also on the weekends, we try to support student services as well when they're open. So we do use a two-part time, and then we have three full-time. The services that you can probably imagine on the cashier's office, there's processing payments, refunds, student IDs, 1098Ts, that's what she's working on right now, and that's all the requirements for those who we receive tuition from that we have to report back out so that they can use those on their taxes. Facility services, you met, again, you met our newest addition tonight, that was Joe, Executive Directors Rod, we have two other supervisors in addition to Joe, four maintainers, four ground personnel, 23 custodials, seven professional technicals, the printing duplicating auxiliary services, facility support. We have an admin, two part-time, a contractor, and then some are interns. Looks like a lot of people. And as you see here, you're going to see why. 78 acres of campus that we maintain, 15 buildings, 1.1 million square feet, 1.8 miles of roadways. I think John had asked me about that a couple of years ago, and I didn't know what it was, but it is just under two miles. 5.1 miles of sidewalks, three parking decks, 20 parking lots, and three extension sites. So that's pretty substantial, the number of areas that we're keeping up with and buildings and the, I guess, the sites. Oh, I guess that was it, I'm sorry.
Next, we have Assistant Vice President Wayhill.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So the Office of Institutional Advancement, I said earlier, our two principal functions are to tell the story of the college and to raise outside resources beyond the traditional sources. In terms of telling Mott's story, again, we have paid media, earned media, and the College Information Center. Paid media examples, the top right is a static billboard that's been up on the expressways. The ones that are moving are what we call GIFs. All of our student models are actual students. We don't use images that are obtained on Google Search or Google Images, we use real people because we believe in our tagline that we're changing lives, and we have evidence to show for that. Earned media, on the right is just the press conference we had last week. So an example of earned media is issuing press releases, hosting press conferences, and getting the word out. We had a ton of hits on local media because of the Prawl Project and Senator Peters coming to the campus. On the left are examples of how we highlight diversity, equity, and inclusion through our earned media. On our Instagram page, we talk about different holidays, including, of course, the King Holiday and other holidays around the world. Under raising resources, we have our Grant Development Office. We also have the Foundation for Mott Community College. Under grants, we write proposals to sometimes national funders, but state and local as well. Upper left is the grand opening of the Crowdy Center. We got a $3 million grant from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation for that project, plus about $200,000 from regular donors who wanted to be supportive of Mrs. Crowdy's legacy. Bottom left is an example of a couple of children that are in the early childhood center where John Cherry had his young one. We have something called C-Campus there, which is a federal grant that allows students who are at community colleges to get their children into childcare for free at their college. And then on the right, of course, is the Prawl Project, mentioned earlier, 12 and 1/2 million generated through our office from CS Mott last year, and more recently, the $650,000 earmark through the budget that President Biden signed. Under the foundation, a couple of examples of how we raise dollars outside of grants from donors. Student Emergency Fund is funded by individuals and companies who give money to that, and students whose cars break down or they have a fire in their apartment or house and they've got to move suddenly, they can draw on that fund. The right-hand side is meant to represent over 100 scholarships that we have at this institution that are endowed by individual donors who came to the foundation and put their money in there. And then the bottom left is the Mott Mobile Learning Lab, half of which, I think it was $250,000, was funded by a single donation from Dr. LaFia and his wife about two years ago, and that's under Roberts Area. Additional responsibilities, we talked about the Centennial a few times tonight. We're in the 100th anniversary of what was Flint Junior College and now Mott. September 23rd, 2023, mark your calendars for fireworks and a parade. Our office is the center for that activity. I'm the chair of the committee. Civility Initiative comes out of the college. Women in Education is an important program that's under our foundation along with the Alumni Association, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some things, but that is IA in a nutshell, and this is our org chart, which you may look at at your convenience. Cheryl.
ITS is a support division of the college. We pretty much exist to make all the things that you just heard happen with the use of technology and software. So you've seen this slide already, but I'm going to embellish a little bit. That's our layout right now. Our Chief Information Security Officer, which reports to the president, has the VC, so and a security engineer, and they have a staff of people because it's a service that we pay for. And then the rest is college employees. So we have locations, three locations here on campus. We're responsible for the Technology Resources Management. We do what I'm going to show you. We do what I'm going to show you in the next slides with 25 people, and we have four vacancies right now. And board policies that relate to IT are listed on this slide. There's a lot of words on here, and I don't like to make slides that ever look like this, but there was no way to really make it condensed. So I'll start with the help desk because it's a more manageable and recognizable number. You can see the number of Chromebooks, Windows, Mac devices, and virtual desktops that we have, which totals about 3,600 end-user devices that we service on campus. We also supply Chromebooks to students for checkout through the library, and we do have a partnership with the Family Life Center to supply Chromebooks for students who don't have technology resources to use for their coursework. We take about 1,000 help desk calls every month, and those come in a variety of methods, I should say, because it's not just PC support. It could be anything. It could be networks. It could be phones. It could be, you know, this machine won't turn on, can you help me? Or, you know, the projector isn't working. There's just all kinds of calls that come in. We even take calls sometimes for other areas of the college, and then we forward them on. So we sometimes take calls for financial aid, et cetera. So we field a lot of calls, and then we farm them out to the proper area for resolution. Enterprise Services, there's a lot up there, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but some highlights. You know, a lot of what we do is we take systems that everybody needs, and we make them talk and pass data back and forth. That's really important because we need to have good data to make good decisions and to make all our systems function efficiently. So that's a lot of what we do in enterprise. We also have a 1,300-page website, and that does not include all of the documents and attachments that go with it, which is probably just as many as the pages themselves. So our website is rather massive and takes a lot of time and maintenance to keep it current. In our Network Services, we have many physical and virtual servers going on, switches, closets, firewalls, 700-plus access points for wireless on campus, over 280 security cameras. Security cameras are a lot of work, I'm just going to tell you. All kinds of other things, the messaging clocks that I pointed out earlier. We have over 100 of those, 37,000-plus accounts that we manage, emails, et cetera. And then we have our Media Services Group. They have smart classrooms. We have over 230 smart classrooms on campus at a variety of sites, 25 smart conference rooms, lots of smart classrooms. We do about 81 video projects a year with a staff of three, now four. And we do a lot of projects, too. They're very integral in a lot of the classroom development that we do, the design, any of the new building spaces, et cetera. So we sort of have our fingers in a lot of pies. The one other thing, I don't see it on here, was the amount of, oh, there it is, miles of outside plant fiber. We have 20 miles of fiber that we also do the care and feeding for, which is how we connect to some of our sites. We also do that with some internet service providers as well to bring our sites and other outlying buildings into connectivity with what we do here on main campus. And that is it.
Thank you. And so I've handed out a folder of information that I'd like to ensure you know what you have. When I apply for this position, you have the profile for the presidential search of what you were looking for as a president and what you wanted accomplished. You have the job description that I am following now as the Community College President. You have the goals that I set with you during the summer listed here, and then you have my contract as well. So everything is there. If you would like to ask questions about it, I'm always available. Please give me a call. But you have all of the information of what I do and why I decided that I wanted to be the president here at Mott Community College. So thank you. This ends the President's Report, and I appreciate you hanging in there, listening to all of the information we had to provide tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like one of those portfolios with the information. Thank you. We have comments from the Board. Mr. Freeman.
As you all know, we're currently being livestreamed and recorded. It's come to my attention from multiple viewers that during a break between our organizational meeting and our regular meeting, there may have been a hot mic incident where a board member may have made a derogatory insult towards one of the college staff. We on the Board take our civility policy very seriously, and we will verify if this actually occurred. If so, we apologize in advance, and we'll ensure that this matter is dealt with swiftly and appropriately. Our staff, faculty, and students deserve our utmost respect, and this behavior should never be tolerated. Thank you.
Mr. Razz.
No comments.
Mr. Daley.
I have nothing to add other than the fact that I will not be at the February meeting. At that time, I plan to be in the Caribbean.
Mrs. Couch.
No comment.
Mr. Swanson. Having concluded our meeting, thank you very much. Have a good evening.